Good evening and welcome to the April 24th, 2017 meeting of the Town of Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the pleasure of the seat?
My congratulations to the United States of America and to our fathers for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, can you please take the roll?
Mr. Dupree.
Here.
Ms. Hendrickson.
Here.
Ms. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Fellows.
Here.
Mr. McGee. Mr. Beale.
Here.
And Ms. Ogless.
Here.
Thank you, and please note that in the absence of Mr. McGee, Ms. Hendrickson will be a voting member this evening. The next item is approval of minutes from the April 3rd, 2017 meeting. Is that moved? Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Our first action item, Risbera Properties LLC requests a sketch plan review for a residential subdivision at 31 Dresser Road, Assessors Map, R31, Lot 18. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just know, this is a residential subdivision, proposed property on Dresser Road. The property is in the RF District, and based on some of the site characteristics, it's required to go through a conservation subdivision design process. So that's what they've developed as part of the sketch plan review. Staff reviewed the comment, or reviewed the application materials to date and provided some comments for the board to consider just in terms of really looking at how this site relates to surrounding properties. We also identified and discussed with our interdepartment meeting that there is an old cemetery on the site that was identified, and I believe the Afghans are already aware of that and may have already field-located that. I'm not sure if that's occurred yet, but they are aware of that. Outside of that, I think I'll turn it over to the back, Mr. Chair. As you said, this is sketch plan, so there's no formal action by the board on this item, but rather beginning of a discussion.
Thanks, Jay. We have a few of those tonight.
Yes, we do.
With that, I'll turn over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Nancy St. Clair with St. Clair Associates. I'm here tonight on behalf of Risbera Properties LLC. We're here to talk to you a little bit about a proposed subdivision off of Dresser Road. The property is about 27 acres in size. It has about 512 feet of frontage along Dresser Road. The rendering that you see up on the screen and the one that you see here on the board represents the conservation subdivision layout. And as Jay mentioned, with the ordinance requirements and the fact that we do have over an acre of wetlands on the site, we are required to go through the conservation subdivision process. So part of that is to also include a traditional subdivision layout, which would be the appropriate sized lots and frontage for properties in the RF, the rural farming district. So this is a traditional subdivision layout, and in Center Hammerhead, we have our access coming in off Dresser Road. Pretty straightforward plan. The lots all meet the ordinance criteria for minimum lot size in the RF District. As you can see on the plan, there are wetlands that are located in various spots on the site. So we have a van that comes through right in the middle here, that comes here, here, and up in this little corner here. Those wetland areas were recently delineated by Mark Hampton, and the rendering shows a couple of different colors associated with it. The darker green color in the middle is the actual wetland. Then there is a lighter area outside of it, which is a 25-foot upland buffer. And then on some of the renderings, you'll also see there's a white line outside of that, which is an additional 15-foot building setback for that. So all of the wetlands on both renderings do show that 25, and then the additional 15 around it. So this is, as I mentioned, a traditional subdivision layout. It's about 1,300 feet of road pitch, excuse me, 1,300 feet of road length with the traditional plan. Back to the conservation plan, you'll see that that is about 200 feet less. So a little over 1,100 linear feet associated with the conservation layout. So the road got a little bit shorter. The crossing on both of those plans, as you see, for the wetlands is about in the same location. We expect it's probably going to be about 2,400 square feet of wetland impact associated with that crossing. We do have just the one crossing that we anticipate as part of that. So again, the road does still terminate in Hammerhead. We have 10 lots proposed as part of the subdivision. The density calculations are included in your packet that shows those deductions. As part of the conservation plan, we also need to provide for open space. That is at least 50% of the lot area. We do have that. There's about 13.73 acres of open space with this plan. A large portion of that is off to what would be sort of the southeast, if you will, end of the site, off the Hammerhead here. Sort of green area here. So also note that it envelops around the perimeter, making this open space area all contiguous. It's about a 50-foot strip at its minimum point associated with that. And it does encompass the wetlands that are identified on the site. So it's that sort of wraparound with the open space. The property does require that we have wells and septic, so we will be doing an evaluation for the septic systems on the site. And one of the series of comments that we had, we'll talk a little bit about each one of those, but I did highlight on the cemetery that Jay mentioned. We did receive the information with coordinates on those points based on the police department's records in their files. So we've roughly identified based on the coordinates that that little spot right there is the potential location for that cemetery. With that information, we will be going back out to see if we can identify anything to more accurately locate it to show that on part of the plan. But that is, has been identified, has been addressed based on the information we have thus far. So we're at the very beginning stages of this process. We are here for a sketch plan review, but I did want to touch on some of the comments that were identified in the memorandum for this. I'll skip down to the third bullet. I think we've talked a little bit about the first two. The wetlands were delineated by Mark Hampton. It is less than five years ago. They were done within the last year. We will be providing information in a letter associated with his delineation as part of our submittal. And that will talk about the Vernal Pool analysis as well. And the next one is with regard to interconnections, and I did want to touch on that a bit as well, about the surrounding properties that are here. Along this edge right here is the common open space associated with Kennebago subdivision. That's Kennebago Drive that comes in off of Two Rod Road. So all along that edge right along here is the open space for Kennebago subdivision. And on the backside right there, it's just a little narrow strip that abuts a piece of property owned by Mr. Cordner. He actually has, the majority of his land is actually off of Two Rod Road as well. It's a little bit closer to the Turnpike. There's quite a ravine and a drainage course that goes through. You folks who are involved in reviewing Kennebago, you remember that the open space and sort of all the drainage kind of goes down into that same area and then down towards the Turnpike, et cetera. Other side here, this area here is owned by Swinburne, and it is a sizable parcel. There is a Trout Brook Lane, I think it's called, that comes in off of Beach Ridge Road that provides the access to that now. And it looks like there's another, at least one, possibly two, right away that come into that as well, looking at the tax map information. Looking at the terrain and the topography, we didn't feel that connectivity to that piece really was warranted given the terrain on that. But that's sort of our global picture of what is happening around it. We can certainly provide more map information for you as part of our submittal, but I just wanted to kind of touch things on that. One of the next comments was with regard to traffic management and a recommendation that the driveways for lots 1 and 10, those are the first two lots in off of Dresser Road, that the driveways for those be limited to the internal subdivision road. And we would agree with that, that that makes sense from a management standpoint. Again, we talked about the cemetery. We will be going out looking for it based on the coordinates that we had found, and we'll actually locate it more precisely to show on the plan. And we did take note of the recommendation requirement for a nitrate analysis, given the fact that we do have proposed septic systems in the subdivision. So a question came up about the frontage on Lot 6, which is at the end of the road there. That 115-foot dimension is measured only along this side of the rightaway and does not include the end. We know that that is not, cannot be counted as part of frontage. So it does meet the standard requirement without inclusion of that end for that. And the last comment was with regard to two lots that are shown on this view here. The first one is a lot that's highlighted right here. That was their construction company lot. That lot was created 17, 16, 17 years ago. The applicant purchased it in order to build a house for a customer. So they have it right in this area here. That's a lot that was purchased by their construction company to build a home on that existing lot of record. The other lot is down in this area here. This one was recently created by the prior landowner and purchased by Risbera Brothers Construction in order to build a house for a customer on that lot. That house has been constructed, and new homeowner is actually on that home now. So that is shown on the plan, but that is not part of this proposed subdivision. So with that, I would like to make any comments, which you folks have. We certainly would love to get your input and feedback as our next steps will be going into more formal design.
Thank you. Susan, do you have anything?
Yeah, let's go to the last first. The Risbera Brothers Construction Company properties. The ones to the left and the right are not part of this development. So if they get, they are going to redevelop, it'll be completely separate from anything we're talking about today.
The two lots are a single lot. They wouldn't be further developed. There's a house on one and one of, a construction on another.
What about the two that are up in, I would call the wetland area? Risbera Properties LLC, there's a couple of parcels. Can you, I have them on.
Can that get anything to it?
No. Up, if you follow the road as proposed, it crosses the wetlands. Before it crosses the wetlands, to the right.
Right here.
Yeah, right in there. There's a couple of parcels, or it has got at least two.
That's the hill that identifies the whole parcel. It's the total area of the property.
Oh, would I have known. Okay. Because I had a bit of a hard time understanding, hearing you frankly. Let me view the open space connections with the Kennebago subdivision. Did you say that there was going to be some attempt made to make some connections to that?
Can you hear me okay, buddy?
Yeah, take that with you.
Hold on. Can you hear me? How's that? Is that better?
A little better, yeah.
Okay, we'll try.
More for the TV than the audience than us.
Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. Hopefully this will work. So this line right here, which is 973 feet long, is the line that abuts the open space for Kennebago subdivision. This area here that's shown all in green is the open space for this subdivision.
Right. So is there going to be any attempt to actually encourage, you know, trails, et cetera, et cetera, that might go, to combine them is what I'm looking for? Or is it just going to be fuel-free?
There aren't any formal trails in the Kennebago subdivision. There would be.
If I'm in this new subdivision and I want to go over into the Kennebago subdivision and to enjoy their open space, it's not a problem.
It's typically connected. This is the lot owners' association for that piece of property.
Right, I understand, but sometimes you don't enter on somebody else's property without permission.
Right now, there is no formal agreement between this property, which would be held by the landowners in this subdivision, and that one. I'm not sure that it couldn't happen in the future. But there wasn't any formal plan to merge the two open spaces? Because this open space is held by the lot owners' association for Kennebago?
I'm concerned about the fact that they're abutting each other, and in a period, over a period of time, people are going to want to move back and forth between the two of them. And I just don't want to have there be a loophole as to who's in the order because it's not part of your subdivision. That's all.
I will forward that on to the attorney.
Okay. You did agree for the lots, the access for lots 1 and 10, and the cemetery is quite clear. The nitrate analysis has been noted, right? Yes. I'm not too sure about what you had said about the Lot 6 frontage clarified. 100-foot footage, the frontage minimum may only be counted along the side of the rightaway, not at the end of the Hammerhead.
So if you can see on, it's probably hard to see on the smaller plan, but if you look right here, there's a dimension called out. It says 115 feet.
Okay.
The 115-foot dimension is measured only along the side of the road. There's another 25 feet that's not included in that 115 that wraps around the end of the road, but that cannot be counted as frontage. So it's not.
Okay. Be careful. And then the last one, the timing of the division of two Risbera Brothers Construction Company properties should be detailed to ensure the properties do not bear consideration as part of the same subdivision. I think that was our way of saying, let's be careful. You're being careful. We don't have to worry about coming back with any issues.
Yeah, so I just wanted to just state that it's my understanding that the lot on the right-hand side was created within the last five years. So though it's already a created lot and someone else owns it, you know, we're not really looking at dimensional layouts, per se, but in terms of its overall impacts to the subdivision, it's my understanding, per state law, that it's still counted as a subdivision lot. So, yeah, so again, you know, the dimensions are, that lot is played out as is played out. We're not really talking necessarily about that, per se, but, you know, it's really a, I think, more of a legal descriptor than anything else. But I just wanted to.
So the Turnpike entrance and access to that lot have anything to do with us looking at this as a subdivision? It's really not, it seems not part of what we're doing today?
No, this lot is standalone. Risbera Brothers Construction purchased this lot. They built a house on it for a customer. And the driveway comes in, I think, in this area here, right off Dresser Road.
Okay.
So I guess, as you had mentioned, if you're sending items along for the attorney to look at, I would suggest that be another, just so we have that appropriately noted on the, anything that we get recorded.
On the same conversation, could I ask what the delineation or the trigger is for consideration as part of the overall subdivision?
Yep, so, yep, so a subdivision is triggered when a lot is, when there's, when a lot is divided into three separate lots within a five-year period. So that first division that was described, that was just a simple land division, is the next division. So if they were just to split this existing lot, I can't remember what you said it was, 20 acres, let's say in half, that would create a subdivision of three lots, so. Again, I don't know that it's going to have a great deal of impact in terms of design, based on sort of that's over in the corner, but it is something we just want to be sure we're.
I'm on that. Thank you.
Roger? Robin?
So building on the, it's, Jay, it's three lots within five years.
Correct.
So Nancy, you said that the one in the eastern corner was developed five years ago?
The one on, what would be the northern corner right here?
Nope. I have a north arrow going, am I going the wrong way?
Yep.
I'm going the wrong way. Uh, nope, to the right.
That's the one we're talking about.
Yep.
That's within five years, right? And the other one that you just were on?
About 16 or 17 years ago.
16 or 17 years ago. And how about the Kennebago up in, up in that area there?
Kennebago was developed.
Five years ago, too.
Five years ago, too.
And Kennebago was a separate parcel at the time?
Even though it's the same owner, though, Jay, could you talk to me a little bit about the delineation there?
It's, I don't think, I don't think that has, I don't think that has, would matter. And based on the number of different configurations that Risbera Construction Brothers goes under, it could well be under separate ownership. And I'm seeing a head nod back there. They're pretty stabby about these things. But I also do believe, because both these parcels are existing separate parcels that were considered conforming at the time, because they both had frontage, the Kennebago property off Two Rod, if I remember correctly, and obviously this one off Dresser, I don't believe it would have mattered anyway, but.
I'm wondering about the wetland survey. You said it was within the year. Was that a field survey or a desktop analysis?
Yeah, he went out into the field. He provided GPS to us.
And were Vernal pools included in that scope of work?
I need to follow up with him on that.
Okay. And what was the total amount of wetlands that was delineated?
Delineated? I couldn't give you the total language. Uh, you can use the second, though. I believe it's probably on the order of about three plus acres.
Three plus acres, and of those three plus acres, you said about one acre will be impacted?
No, about 2,400 square feet.
2,400 square feet, okay. How, as part of the conservation subdivision, what we're looking for is maintaining natural features and preservation, preserving uplands and wetlands. How has that been incorporated into your plan?
If you look at the plan, you'll see that the darker area is here in these central locations are the wetlands that were mapped on the site. If you look at those areas, all of the lot lines, that's why the lines are a bit jagged on the lot lines, all of those lot lines respect a 25-foot upland buffer from those delineated wetland limits. We have provided a mix of upland in this open space area here along with these wetlands. We provided a 50-foot corridor as a buffer around the perimeter of the site. The terrain in this area here are some nice gnolls, and then they drop off to the wetland areas. So those are all set aside as open space.
Our plans were black and white, so it was just kind of hard to see where that is. So is the open space, then, the dark green you said, around the bottom, so it's wetland?
It's hard to, it looks much nicer on the screen than it is on the plate. Hopefully you can hear me. This is the wetland.
Could you grab the, grab the hand mic? Viewing audience at home.
Okay. So this area here is matched wetland. This lighter area here is a 25-foot.
Yep.
Upland buffer. The white area outside of that is a 15-foot upland nobel setback. So that's matched around every one of the wetlands. So there's this one, this one, and these little ones down here. So then, this color green ties them all together. So it connects all of that with open space and provides, this is 50 feet here. That's an upland that's part of the connection for the open space. All along here, this is all open space here, 50 feet here, the wetlands and the upland buffers, 50 feet down in this area here. So that's all the open space, which is 13.73 acres.
Okay, and so what you're saying then is that the 10 lots that are outlined there are all on uplands, and there's no, the only impact is like 20,000 square feet.
Right there, like an 10-point to half a acre.
On future plans, could you please identify the old cemetery? And I guess some color and open space would be great, too. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Robin.
As I mentioned, we will be going out in the field to locate that and put it on the plate.
The Kennebago development, how much open space do they have that would be contiguous there?
I'd say it's probably on the order of very close to the same size.
Create substantial.
It's 23 acres. So this is 20, this is 13, so.
So it's pretty substantial contiguous area. One observation, as I look at that Hammerhead, that's the configuration of Lot 6 kind of rules out any sort of trail possibilities?
Into the open space?
Into the open space, because the way it, Lot 6 abuts that Hammerhead area at the top.
Well, we have opportunities for trails along here, which is all open space.
Are you going to be putting in, is there any anticipated, any trails anticipated in that area? That's a pretty large upland area, and folks are going to want to be using it.
We can certainly look at that. We hadn't anticipated it, so if we wouldn't.
Is that, those two wetlands that are connected underneath the road there, I mean, there's a lot of different definitions of wetlands as to how wet they actually are. Is there culvert under there or anything? Or I haven't walked that lot, so I don't know exactly what it looks like, but, um, or is that just, does that road just separate those two pieces and go right?
Are you talking like it?
Yeah.
That's our proposed road, so there's nothing there now?
No, I know, but when you do put the road in...
Oh, absolutely, we'll be...
I know. There's a culvert, there's a lane up there, I guess. Yeah, just see that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I don't really have a lot of questions, I think.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, I think this is fairly straightforward as these things go. Possibly most importantly, from my perspective, you seem to be doing a good job of honoring rule number one on these things, which is avoid wetlands on private property in terms of actual house lots, so that's great. And I think my fellow board members have pretty well covered most of the, most of the key points here, and I do appreciate the point by point walkthrough in response to the staff comments. It's always really helpful. So we'll look forward to seeing the wetlands, the, hearing about vernal pools in connection with the wetlands delineation, exploring potential for interconnection with open space. And I know these things, you know, often happen a little bit more organically and not necessarily formal trails with a lot of clearings, but I think very least it'd be nice to kind of clarify, sort of the, as Ms. Hollis said, any sort of legal rights for, for crossing back and forth, to the extent that that might be a consideration. And, yeah, we'll look forward to seeing the cemetery marked out on the revised plans. You've got the nitrate analysis that'll be ongoing. Appreciate the response on Lot 6 frontage. And there are a couple of kind of housekeeping items, just legal front that you're going to check on. So beyond that, I don't think I have anything else. Is there anything more that you'd like from us in terms of feedback at this point?
We'll just be moving forward with more detailed designs, so we do appreciate your input there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing it. The next item, Great Lots of Maine requests a sketch plan review for a residential subdivision at 725 U.S. Route 1, Assessors map U-29, Lot 7. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is another sketch plan for a, another residential subdivision, however, in a, in a different context than what we had just seen. This subdivision is in the town's Village Residential 2 district, which really envisioned sort of more compact style development, interconnected streets, pedestrian connections, sort of more, more formalized pedestrian connections, I should say, rather than trails, a little trails and, and sort of integrated open spaces are also a key consideration, but not so much sort of the large swamps that we were just sort of looking at. So as part of our staff comments, we provided a bit of overview of the expectations and design criteria that are in the zoning ordinance. I think in looking at this item, and I think a couple of board members are probably on the board, I know we're on the board a few years ago when this was before you, under a different applicant. One of the key discussions we had at that time and still need to have is around access into the site and getting access off of Route 1. I know there's been some work either by this applicant or prior property owners to secure easements to ensure they have a rec-50 foot wide right of way to be able to get in there at least with a private road, and that's part of the discussion I'm sure we'll, we're likely to have here moving forward. Other elements to talk about is, again, this developer, Mr. Hollis, has been having conversations with some of the abutting property owners, particularly those along, really on both sides, but I think at this point, the folks on Lucky Lane, which is an existing private road slash driveway that provides access to three homes. I think they've been working on trying to coordinate access because I think as board members will know, with our recent review in this area of town with the Dunston Crossing, traffic in this area can be difficult, and that's going to certainly be some, a key area that the applicant knows he's going to need to work on as and if this moves forward into a formal application. So, let's see, I guess I should also just touch base on, just identifying the fact that the property address is listed in the town's historic preservation section of the zoning ordinance. However, the map and lot and property really refer to the property next door, sort of, I'll say to the south towards the South Coast side. So though this property isn't in the historic, isn't one of our historic properties, certainly I do consideration to sort of the relationship and coordination with that property is at least worthy of mention. Let's see, and I guess the other sort of critical element to be thinking about is this property is in the Phillips Brook watershed, which we've talked about again before. This is one of our two urban impaired streams that the town's sort of currently undergoing study of, and a watershed management plan, I should say, and so we'll want to be sure we're giving, again, all due consideration to that. And did I mention interconnectivity with abutting properties? I think that would be the other, among, among any, another one of the items that we'll be looking at and considering. So with that, Mr. Chair, turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jay, and I'll hand it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Hollis, I'm the owner, developer of Great Lots of Maine. Thank you, Jay, you practically presented my whole project for me, thank you. But let me give the five points. I'm going to come around and hopefully I won't need this microphone, can you all hear me?
Could you grab the handheld, please?
Really?
It's really more for the TV broadcast.
I'm sorry.
For the TV.
Is it on?
Mm-hmm. If it's not, we'll be told from our friends in the desk room.
Okay, thank you very much. The property, as you see here, 725 U.S. Route 1, the 23-acre apostle, this started out as owned by one family, it was 46 acres, right here. This is the Agnesarian property, this is the Dunston Crossing property, Elliot Chamberlain's property right here, yeah, and we are just right down the road. This is the property that I have under contract, this 23 acres here. Access, to talk about the access into the property, according to the deed, it was a 27-foot of frontage only that went with this property. There was another 24-foot easement that abuts the property that allowed me a 50-foot right of way. Ms. Kane, who's the president owner of this property, has rights to that easement, were aware of that, if this, this project gets further along and this becomes a public roadway, that that easement would have to be purchased by me, and I would have to, of course, grant it to the town of Scarborough. To give an idea, survey was done by Steve Ross, a well-known survey in the area. Here's the 23-acre piece where we are, this blue pretty much represents what we're developing. The rest of this property beyond Phillips Brook is right about here, Stewart's Brook is down, that runs down this way, I think Stewart's Brook is identified right here, going off the property. The property is mostly pasture. Here's Lucky Lane, which is a driveway servicing three residences over here. This is Queen's Drive right here, and the property runs all the way out, 22 acres, 2,500 feet deep to the, to the highway. Now for the subdivision. This project is truly in its infancy. I mean, we are really getting to know this property pretty well. Now that the snow is cleared, we're getting to know it even further. So we looked at the BR2 zoning. We know that there was a minimum 5,000 square foot lots and 30 feet of frontage, we didn't want to do that, quite small, of course. We wanted to create a community that could be affordable and at least have some room from some lots. Our lots are from 700, 800 square feet to 25,000 square feet. Wetlands were delineated two years ago by Mark Hampton. The wetland line runs this way, probably about three acres of wetlands on the side here. We waited for the snow to melt, we wanted to go back out there, you know, like, usually in all my projects, my wetlands are usually delineated immediately, within a few months when you make a presentation. This was a two-year-old wetland delineation. I went back out there with Mark Sensi, another wetland scientist that I work with, and we discovered last weekend a couple of small wetlands along these areas, along here. So we decided to put on the brakes, and what we're going to do is we're going to have the whole property re-delineated, again, fresh, to know exactly what we have for wetlands. All of this is going to be confirmed in the field. These two, there's two small swamps right in this area right here that we discovered last weekend that weren't part of the original wetland plan, so it gave us reason for concern. We took a step back and we said, we're going to get to go back. He's going at the end of this week, and he's re-delineating the whole site to go back. So we think that obviously some of this might change. The net density calculation for just this front, 11 acres is probably over 40 lots. We're not doing anything with the back 11 acres of the property. We know the requirement for open space is 10 to 20 percent, we're probably going to be somewhere around 50 percent. We know the dead end rule is 2,000 feet. We did our road 1,914 feet to the end. It was brought to my attention by Jay in earlier meetings that Gordon Way and Thurston Way is considered part of the dead end. We remember that, we were told that just recently. So whatever adjustments have to be made to that, or whether a waiver's going to be asked for, that's something that we have to determine. As far as connecting to other properties, there's a 50-foot right of way running to the other side to the Chesnut property. Gordon Way right here stops, but that would be, when we come back in here, I think we're going to be here for two conceptual meetings, quite honestly, as we get further along with this. Gordon Way will connect the Segouty Jenkins property on this side. The roadway that we're proposing is 22 feet wide. There's public water on Route 1, there's an 8-inch spectral line right here available to us, we've already met with Portland Water District. There's enough PSI to service our 31-lot division. There is sewer. 800, 200 feet away, there's a sewer manhole right here to Mr. Chamberlain's property. The discussions are ongoing with him, when that sewer's going to be turned over to the town. We're hoping we're going to make our own arrangements that we're going to be bringing sewer down Route 1 to connect to the rest of the property. If God forbid we can't accomplish that, the sewer on Route 1 goes about 1,600 feet away. But we're pretty confident we're going to be able to sit down with Mr. Chamberlain and coordinate when that sewer's there turned over to the town, that we're going to have an opportunity to go into it and come back and then come back out to our property. There's also a street, there's also poles on our side of the roadway for electrical connection here, so the whole thing, of course, will be underground electric. We get back to the subdivision. We talked about sidewalks. We know that the requirements have sidewalks on both sides of the street. Jay's been great, offering me great guidance and, and what might be acceptable and what might not be. Obviously, as the subdivision gets busy down here, there'll be sidewalks on both sides of the roadway to this 50-foot right of way. Maybe there's a possibility of just doing one sidewalk further up on this side. Obviously, that's open for discussion. Maybe single sidewalks on Gordon Way or Thurston Lane. But again, that's open for discussion. We talked about that the 50-foot turnarounds couldn't be used for frontage. That kind of affected this lot, Lot 7. So when next time we're back in front of the board, that will change. We'll make sure that we comply and we don't have 50-foot turnarounds being used for frontage. Landscape architect will be hired as we get further along with this. For our Thurston Way, someone had thought about having these open space areas, maybe it's a possibility of deeding some of that land to Foley on Lucky Lane, and the doming on Lucky, on Lucky Lane also, giving them the rough amount of frontage that they would require, so they're no longer non-conforming, and they go back to a, they go to a conforming state. Street trees, every 50 to 100 feet along the whole roadway, that'll be something that'll be part of the architects, landscape architects plan. And this open space area right here, this is a field that's mostly dry in the summer. We talked about beauty gardens, playgrounds. I said in my present, I said in my overview when I submitted my plan three weeks ago, that we would meet with the DEP and have that discussion of the possibility of that. After discovering those wetlands down there, we decided to hold back and get those wetlands properly delineated before I get out there with the DEP to have that discussion with them. Last thing I wanted, a sidewalk going through the property, not having the wetlands properly Mark Sensi, the soil scientist, went out there, he's thought that there was going to be no vernal pools on this property, but obviously he's going to write the, well, formal letter and get out there for me for us to make this thing, and make that determination whether there's any vernal pools back there. Phillips Brook is back here, we have a 75-foot stepback for our property here. We have had two meetings with the abut, with the abutters, with the neighbors. We're looking at, when we get time, when it can, as we get further along, it's our intent to provide those neighbors with sewer installation and with underground electrical. And we're going to get, we're going to get to an agreement on that, and we're going to be able to provide them that. There's also consideration of affordable housing. We're giving thought to that and how that's going to apply to the, how that's going to apply to the overall park project. And I'm here to answer any questions that anybody may have as we get moving along with the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to board discussion, we don't always have public comment at this stage in the process, but I think that given the sort of unique nature of this property and the number and range of the abutters and some of the discussions that have been ongoing...
I welcome it, I welcome it, Mr. Chairman.
There's a little bit of history to it. I thought I would offer that opportunity for any of the abutters who wanted to come up and make any brief remarks. Just ask if you do, state your name and keep it to five minutes or less.
So Katie Foley, three Lucky Lanes. You know, it's interesting, this, Paul is the third developer who has actually approached us. The second one never made it as far as the first. I know you had one other proposal in front of you a couple of years ago. So what I would say is, I, I think Paul's done a great job in terms of being proactive and reaching out to us, hearing what our concerns are. And as Paul said, we've had a couple of meetings, and we're definitely moving towards a place where we can get excited about this and be happy for it. So what I would say, and Jane and Jerry are the only neighbors that are not here, the rest, this is all Lucky Lane, here in the third row. Now Jane grew up on this, on this land, and the house that I currently live in and that Ted and Gail currently live in, she's got the, you know, wonderful stories of, you know, aunts and uncles and holidays and whatnot. So it's kind of that old thing of, you know, when we first moved in, it was rural farming. It was not BR2. So we have these beautiful fields and, and we realize, you know, that what was our view will not always be our view, and so we're, we feel fortunate that there's somebody coming to the table who is willing to have that conversation with us, because we recognize that a developer doesn't certainly have to take the neighbors into consideration. So the other piece of it is, and if you look on your other maps, you will see that both the doming's property and my property in particular will significantly benefit, be benefited in the long run. Yes, we're going to lose the beautiful field, which I'm sure Gail would say is not what she wants, to house views, but we will get our own driveway back. Apparently, her, our lots are non-conforming, as Paul said, and they have to access their house like dragons through my driveway. So getting our own driveways back gives us a little bit more privacy, there's a benefit there. We do still have some concerns that we've shared with Paul about the existing Lucky Lane and that access where it is now, and what would be required of him in terms of closing that. We believe it's a huge safety hazard, pulling out of there can be really difficult as it is, so we would imagine that you would require him to close that, but we have ongoing discussions around what that would look like, what that might mean for us. You know, we, we love our little spot in the world, and to be honest, it'd be great if it never got developed, but we understand we don't have that control. So we're happy to work with Mr. Hollis and with all of you to make it a win-win for the town and a neighborhood that works for... the town and a neighborhood that works for Scarborough. And as you can imagine, I might have been the one who might have planted a seed in his ear about affordable housing included in the project. I think that's, that's something I'm passionate about and I think it's important. So thanks for hearing the call.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Katie.
All right, thank you. Susan, if you don't mind, I'd like to start with you again since I know you were on the board and we heard about this property previously.
Okay, I'm going to ask a few questions first.
Sure.
When I look at the present Lucky Lane, okay, and the two houses that fed from the Lucky Lane, what's down below the farm or what? Property that is not attached to any kind of access.
I'm sorry, Susan.
Or we're standing in front of the thing, okay. Now, take where the proposed.
Lucky Lane here?
No, go to where the proposed, 27-inch wide right-of-way comes through.
Right here.
No.
Oh.
Where's Lucky Lane?
Right here.
Yep. Okay, follow it up.
Okay.
Okay, right there.
Yep.
Now go down and there's a building to your left.
There's a building here.
There, what is that?
That's the, that's Seguti Jenkins' home.
That's the Jenkins' home.
Paul, could you grab that?
That's the Jenkins' property.
We need you to have the mic, sorry.
I apologize.
Okay, so it's really hard to see from this how that's all going to feed into the new quote-unquote Lucky Lane. I would be very interested to see that developed more concretely. I don't get it. And I'm not asking you to tell me right now because this is just a review session.
Okay.
But this has not shown me anything about how that's going to benefit the present resident of that particular property.
Do you want me to respond?
No.
Okay.
I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
This is just, you know, my opportunity to say.
Okay.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to take the staff comments and just go down through them. You have them, I'm sure.
I do.
Okay. Is there connected streets and communal spaces? I'm starting at the new criteria. Is there connected streets and communal spaces that establish a village design? I'm not saying that I don't approve of this layout, but this is not your standard village. This is a straight line with a little bit of a curve to it, it's got a couple of side streets. So the devil's going to be in the details for this for me. I would like to make sure that there are sidewalks on both sides of the street and there's tree trees on both sides of the streets and everything that can pass, the lighting is perfect, you know, I mean, I'm overstating the case. But you're going to have to create a sense of village from something that is absolutely not a village, okay? And I think you understand that. Okay, where am I? Okay, the part that's going to be the most difficult, I think, is going to be the alignment coming in off of one. I, I just don't see how that's going to be resolved, but I don't think that it's my job to try to help anybody figure out how to do that, so.
Bill Bray, traffic engineer, we're going to hire. Bill Bray, I walked this spot for the project.
No.
He determined that was the best spot for the access in was where that easement is and where that road is. But of course, Bill Bray's traffic study is going to back that up.
Jay, help me, where is the thing about the right-of-way having to be given to the town?
So, well, let's see, there's, the right-of-way doesn't necessarily have to be given to the town. If he wants a private way, that would be one thing. But generally, so if.
He wants it to be a.
If he wants it to be a town road, the issue is, and as Mr. Hollis explained earlier, he's only has about, 24 feet of drainage that he actually owns and another 26.
27.
27.
27.
Yep. So the easement, the issue is for the town to accept the road as a public road, we didn't have the fee ownership and not just an easement over that. So that would be part of an ongoing discussion. So we could still do a private way because, you know, he has provided the documentation that the easement exists, but it would maintain as a private way. Like, going forward, when you can start to see the connections that this property has with the other properties, it certainly seems to make sense and merit every effort to push towards a public road.
Public road, okay, that's very helpful. I really appreciated what you were saying about maybe needing to come back for another sketch plan.
Oh, yes.
And I think, oh, yes, is definitely the answer. Just when you said that you think you may have found some additional wetlands, that alone would make a difference.
I almost thought of pulling myself off the agenda, Susan, but I wanted to get your comments.
Oh, no, we'd like having you here.
I like being here.
I know. But that also will give us time to talk more specifically about this whole thing about is it going to be private or is it going to be public and how, 20 houses on a dead-end residential street and you've got 34, and how is that all going to work itself out? Seems to me to be, you know, really mucky and we can't, the board can't discern. We've got to be given a plan that says this is how it's going to be, how many lots, how this is going to be.
Absolutely right.
And it seems to me that that's very much up in the air right now.
Okay.
Okay. The hammerhead thing, it's part of the same, same deal. You've got some of the funniest arrangements of how you're going to get into some of these lots. I just actually started to giggle. It's like, how am I going to get a car in there? The hammerhead thing is really confusing. And that's another thing that I think that you're going to have to be able to work on if you take a little more time. The, there's, I've got a lot to the end of Thurston, Gordon and Lucky Lane, these can be reconsidered. You know, I mean, it's all part of the same overall determinism that we have. Okay, the whole idea of the design standards for the streets, I'm not going to reiterate them because they're here in the staff comments, but they're all very important, obviously. And then the other elements. I'm very concerned about the impaired streams that you are building around and that's one of the reasons why this is not really gone any further than it's gone in the past because this is, this is tricky. It's really tricky.
You mean specifically Phillips Brook, Phillips Brook?
Yeah, Phillips Brook.
Right.
Enhanced buffer of the stream should be considered for the project, given that one factor contributing to the impairment of Phillips Brook is concentrated points of stormwater. So already we're talking about a really sophisticated stormwater plan. We have another member of our board here who is really big on stormwater management and who will be watching.
I agree.
Like a hawk. Layout of development that mimics the natural hydrology of the site, you know, I mean, again, this isn't my cup of tea. I mean, I appreciate it, but it's not the thing that I'm really knowledgeable about. But I think that the last one here is the one I'm most concerned about. Extensive changes to wetland areas will impact the overall stream and therefore a peer review of the wetland's state location, early pool analysis is recommended. And from what you've said, I'm sure that you're on work, I'll work on that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so my overall, my overall theory is that if you come up, if you actually do everything you say you want to do, this could go. This could go. It really could.
I'm going to work hard to, I embrace everything you said.
I'm not convinced, I'll be very honest with you, I'm not convinced, but I'm willing to be convinced, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Susan, Roger?
Thanks. I actually think this is a pretty interesting concept you have here. And I'm glad you've spoken with the abudders because I think this Phillips Brook thing is a real dilemma for any future development.
Right.
So on the other side, to turn by side of that.
Right.
Have you spoken to Elliot Chamberlain about?
I've had one meeting with him.
Okay. And how about, let's see, is it Gazza?
Gazarian.
Have you spoken to him?
I've reached out to him. He hasn't returned, I spoke to his nephew, had a meeting with his nephew about the possibility of future development on that property. And a price was given to me and then a few days later, Gazarian changed his mind, said he wanted to sell it, so.
Okay. Um, okay. The, just clarify for me, on Route 1, the easement, is that, this is where you're talking about the easement, right? And when I'm looking at this here, all right, is the easement, that portion, see where it says 80?
Yeah, I'm going to try to zoom right in on it here for you. It'll be up on the screen, so, well, it's a big plan. Keep going, right? Yep.
Yep.
Yep, right where it says 80.
The black line.
That little triangle.
So that's.
That's the easement area.
That's the easement.
Right. Right, and I wish my mouse was, had any color. Honestly, there's a thing in there, but I can't see it.
You want me to point to it? You have to point to it.
No, I mean, that's clear.
I think you've got it.
Sure.
So there's no, there's no problem if that goes through?
It's, if it, right, it was, if it stays as an easement, then it would be a private, the road would have to remain a private way until.
Okay, but if it's sold.
If he, if he, if Mr. Hollis gets full ownership of it, then it wouldn't be, then, right, he would have full 50-foot line right-of-way.
And how does, how does the Chestnuts feel about that?
Well, they're away of vacation. We've had.
They came back, they go back, they couldn't hear them, they'll come around.
We've had minimum discussion about it, but the probability of me bringing water short all the way up to their property, to the back and giving a match to the back of their property, you would think would, might cause some consideration.
Sure, okay. I, I did note on, on this other piece of material here, documentation, that the speed limit rate in that area is 35 miles an hour.
Right. They go faster, though.
Is that posted? Do you happen to know whether that's posted both at the north end and the south, you know, when you're coming into Scarborough? Is it posted 35? Is that the same speed limit all the way up, 35? Or does it reduce it down to 30?
That's the idea.
No, it reduces down to 30, I think.
It may further up, I, I don't know exactly where the transition would be.
Roger, the, as we know, the order is 300 feet away from roadway to roadway.
Yeah.
We've got about 225 feet from the center of Queens Drive, the center of proposed. By the way, when I got, when I got Bill Bray out there immediately to look at that, I said, you know, I can get 300 feet, but I got to get closer to the existing Lucky Lane, which nobody likes. And he confirmed that. Well, they all have the road.
The neighbors.
The neighbors, but that is not, Bill Bray's professional opinion, that's not the right place to put the access. This is the, this is the place, so.
Okay.
Obviously, I'm going to hire you to do a whole traffic study to determine that.
Finally, I guess, what's going to happen to the current Lucky Lane?
It's not, the intention is to close the existing Lucky Lane. It's going to be the new Lucky Lane.
Who's going to take over ownership of that?
Of this, well, it's either going to be owned by the association or owned by the town, one or the other.
Can I make a comment?
No, sorry. Sorry, we're done with public comment. Well, there'll be other opportunities. Thanks.
I guess, I guess I'm, I'm done, but I, I commend you for being so proactive and you seem to be wanting to get everybody's cooperation, so I.
Without the neighbors, I really can't get this project going.
Timing is everything.
I respect that, so I'm going to need the neighbors to put this project together.
Off that, Roger?
Yeah, I'm off that.
Thanks. Robin?
Yeah, as, as Roger and Susan said, I commend you for your proactive nature on this.
Thank you.
And I also really commend you for going back out last weekend and seeing that additional wet area and thank you for looking for vernal pools.
Absolutely.
I think, you know, that'll be something, I think, to be seen. However, because these are the headwaters of Phillips Brook and I'm sure that Angela and other staff members have talked to you about the need to maintain the certain hydrology that's there, otherwise downstream properties are going to feel the effects.
We know it's vital.
Okay.
If we have to move lots or eliminate lots, we're open to.
I think, I think what's important, too, is to try to, to the maximum extent possible or practical, is to try to keep and treat the stormwater on-site. So instead of trying to make it go to one massive stormwater detention pond or have it, you know, go here, there, everywhere, really think about using a landscape architect and trying to put some type of rain gardens or, you know, integrate those types of things into character.
You mean on pretty much where we have this area right here?
Mm-hmm. Well, isn't that where you said the mapped wetlands were, though?
It is a mapped wetland, but we're a little confused by it because it's pretty dry in the summer.
Well, we also had a very drought, we were in drought last year, too.
Okay.
So have you seen it prior to last year?
No.
Okay, so let's not use last year as a baseline, okay? And I, I don't mean that in a, you know, a punitive sense.
No, that's what I was told, but I hadn't seen it myself, no.
Yeah. So really, you know, the whole, if you work with a landscape architect or if you look into these low-impact development type of techniques and principles, it's really going to give you, it's really going to go a long way, Paul.
Okay. I'm going to write this down.
And I think you've done a good job, too, of trying to minimize your wetland impacts already, but, but definitely low-impact development techniques and principles, maintaining as much stormwater on-site as possible.
Right.
And not putting it to a large centralized, like stormwater pond or something like that that's just going to go and rush into the stream and cause flooding downstream kind of a thing, or, or not cause, but contribute.
What if there was a part area back off the property? I mean, what if we, we know this is the low spot to the property, right about here.
Charles, could you grab the handheld again?
I'm sorry.
That's quite okay.
We know this is the low spot right about here.
Right.
And I think that's the area we've got to do the most attention to.
And well, and what I'm saying is give each parcel its own attention.
So break it up?
Yep.
Okay.
Exactly.
All right.
Other things, I guess, I would be looking for is how are you going to minimize the impact when the road crossing near that wetland, what's considered a wetland mound area, that kind of thing.
I think we're definitely going to be in tier one.
Okay.
I mean, they suggested that, you know, this is only, they did the sound at 4,000 square feet, but now that we have this, we discovered this wetland down here.
Yep.
That's all we're throwing up the window. I think we're going to be on tier one and we're going to have to deal with it.
That, that's about all I had and, you know, continue to reuse staff as a resource and, and again, think about each parcel on its own and not the larger, okay?
I will.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Robin. Rachel?
Yeah, I, as I listened to you, it helped me understand, I was not clear on these right-of-ways and what you were planning on doing, but I think through your discussion, now I, I think you've set up a, kind of a win-win for the, for the abudders and for the development by allowing them to essentially gain a conforming lots. And I was concerned originally that all of a sudden there's going to be two exits, the old Lucky Lane and the, the new Lucky Lane onto Route 1. You've, you've cleared up some confusion there. That said, I'm still concerned about the traffic problems on Route 1. We've noted the, the posted speed limits and I've traveled that and I've, I've sometimes been the only car that's been traveling the posted speed limit. And it's going to be something that the, the whole town, I think, is going to have to tackle along that area because this question arose when we were looking at Dunston Corners as well. The exit onto Route 1, the traffic, the, the speed limits. So we, we do have that problem just sitting there. Not necessarily much you can do about it, but there it is. Along with Susan, I'm concerned about, we're supposed to see a concept that really creates a village space and it's not, it's not quite here.
Oh, I know, it's not.
So I would really like to see that the next time, yeah. And I also have a question. I know you have the open space going all the way back to the, to 95. And that open space really is where the Phillips Brook crosses and the watershed, the real watershed area is.
Right here, it's close to it.
So, I would, I gather at this point, there is no, there is no further plans to develop past the end of this? And in the future, is that circling, circling to the back of your mind?
Yeah.
That that might be a possibility at all?
None. To develop the back?
Yeah.
None.
Okay. That's, that's some comfort, then. It's interesting, when I first looked at it, I said, what in the world's he trying to do here? But listening to you and the staff comments, it's very helpful, and I do think there's some good possibilities here. Thank you.
Thanks. Rick?
Sure. I have a couple of questions. So, I guess, you have no plans to develop that, and I'm not sure if it, it's a big parcel of land, so I would think that you might want to think about it at some point, but is there any way that you could put a future restriction, Jay, on developing, like, a piece, another part of the land, just so you know?
We are gonna restrict it.
You are?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I, and I wasn't actually looking for a restriction as much as if you said I was only gonna develop twenty-five percent of that. If you're willing, that's great.
We don't even, you know, if the Brook wasn't so sensitive, it'd be nice to have trails and other things like that, but crossing that Brook, I don't wanna chance it.
All right, well, it's...
When you put restrictions on things, people don't leave them, they don't change, before you know it, you've got a problem. So, we'd rather just keep it in its natural straight and natural, a natural eleven, twelve-acre piece and leave it there.
Okay.
And restrict it.
Yeah, I looked at this piece of property once.
Oh.
I looked at your house, too, with the radiant floors.
The big one, yeah.
That one's got rigged, the one in the back. That was a nice lot. Thing I liked most about it, though, was that there was a big field out back with the hay, so I can understand. And my wife stood in the backyard and said, that's not always gonna be hay. So, anyway, sorry, I was there for a minute. All right. The other question I had, a couple of questions, just because I'm a little bit familiar with the lot. There's a little yellow strip through that Chestnut land, and...
Over here?
Yeah, so right there.
Oh, okay.
And at one time, I was told by a realtor, and not that that's always all the facts they need, but at one time I was told you could come off, potentially come up Queens Road, go across that field and into that parcel. That's probably not anything that you looked at, or not anything that...
Well, there's, you know, there's a D to fifty-foot right-of-way to the, from two kings, from the family of Chestnut, going down here. And if somebody wanted to connect to these other properties, that's why that was put there, the fifty-foot right-of-way. And I'm obviously, I'm obviously giving him the connection, as well as the sewer stuff, I might add, at the end of this connection, in case he ever decides to do anything with his back property. But when you start to get back here, as we discovered in looking at the Agger Zerian property and the Chestnut, there's a lot of clay back here, it starts to become, you know, when you start dealing with these heavy clays and you're talking about builders coming in and building houses over there, they've gotta know what they're building on. They're gonna know what they got there for soils. I can't just come in as a responsible land developer and say, oh, okay, here, buy a lot and eat the zoning. You're gonna know what those materials are back there, 'cause when it comes to putting basements in, where's water gonna go? Where's water gonna go? So, not only do I have to think beyond my stormwater plans for my roadway, I have to think of stormwater for every one of those houses. And where's that water gonna go? And when I get my stormwater guy on this, I've actually got two engineers I'm interviewing about this, I mean, that stormwater's a big part of this whole thing, and it's gonna be taken right to the construction of the homes, not just the construction of the roadway.
The reason, part of the reason I asked about that right-of-way was because when I looked at the house that's existing on that piece of property, or the property in front of your proposed subdivision, coming in and out on Route One, that's around a corner and down the hill. So, making a right is, you know, feasible, making a left is borderline suicide, I would say, but maybe we could get creative with the signage. I know on Holmes Road, where it crosses Peachridge, I think, they've got the blinking red stop signs, Angela, I love those. Yeah, it's only one of my kids' stops for.
Around me.
So, I don't know if, like, the blinking thirty-five mile an hour signs might be something that we could talk about.
I think that'd be great.
Just to, just to keep your people safe, I know that's what you want.
I'm really interested to see what Bill Bray has to say.
Yeah, might be one of his ideas, he's a pretty smart guy.
Before I get to, uh, follow along with it.
I do like your short driveways, I liked them last winter, but I am a little, that dead end, the Variet dead end?
Down here?
Yeah.
No.
How are we, how are we turning around down there? I mean, is that, are we backing into someone's driveway and turning around?
Well, you know, I think they have this dedicated as a fire channel, but this whole, Rick, this whole area back here, considering the closeness with the, with Phillips Brook, and how we handle the stormwater down here, and of course, Robin's suggestions about breaking things up, I think this is gonna get adjusted and changed a little back here. I mean, the fire department, I mean, we could provide the fire department easement to get in here and turn around, but I think we gotta be a little bit more sophisticated when we get back here.
Yeah. I would, you know, I know this is just a preliminary plan, and I like your plan, I just think that you might want to think about that.
Right.
I'd forever have people turning around my driveway, so. Yeah, the rest of it, the rest of it looks good. I like the fact that you reached out to the neighbors, that was very nice of you, and I think that promotes goodwill.
I think we gotta turn it into a village, so.
Yeah.
That's all.
I think it's fine.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you've done a pretty good job collectively here of kind of setting the table and laying out the parameters in terms of what some of the opportunities and challenges are here. As stated earlier, I don't think we need to get too far into the weeds on some of the nuances of the lot layouts and things like that, and we've got a lot to sort of figure out with some built-in constraints here. I do agree, and will amplify, that, as you just stated, you need to look at how you can create a little bit more of a village feel in terms of your street network and lot configurations and so forth, within the context of some, some environmental sensitivities as has been noted. I really appreciate your diligence on, on the wetlands and delineating that, redelineating that, and your, your, seems to be genuine sensitivity to all that. Likewise, regarding the neighbors, the abutters. And I would say to the neighbors that, as I mentioned earlier, that, you know, there'll be other opportunities, and I would also encourage you to, you probably don't need the encouragement, but continue to obviously communicate directly with the developer as well. You know, the board can be, board and staff can be something of an intermediary at times. Sometimes it's most efficient.
They keep a pretty sharp leash on me, Mr. Chairman, so.
So, if there's, if there's a direct line of communication, that's great, and then we do have built into our processes, we move into more of a full site plan review and get beyond sketch, that there's another opportunity for public comment at that point, and you can also correspond by email and so forth. So, I think that's all good and encouraging. We've got kind of a laundry list of to-do items here, which I won't, I won't list all out, but I trust you have all that from tonight, and it's in the staff comments. We'll obviously look forward to seeing the traffic analysis, that's the, that's the, you know, one of the big questions, certainly, and I think there, as was alluded to, there's a kind of a bigger issue here that transcends this proposal around speeds and what the town and others may be able to do to address that situation. And we just, within the context of this project, wanna make sure that we don't make anything worse and that we configure things as safely as possible if this does go forward. One of the housekeeping items that Jay mentioned, just in the staff notes, is on the, on the, on the address, and again, I'm sure you have all that noted down. I'm just gonna make sure we're not missing anything here, I think we've covered everything. I am, I am glad to hear that you're considering incorporating some sort of affordable housing, and that's been, as you know, I'm sure, been sort of an evolving process here and outlook here in terms of how, what the town can do to kind of incentivize those things, so I really hope you'll, you'll drill down on that and be able to incorporate something. One thing I did wanna propose, given the nature of this, this property and what's being proposed, which we've done on several other projects, is that we work with staff to schedule a site offer to the board. And I'll leave that to staff to coordinate with the, with the developer, and certainly the abutters will be kept in the loop as well. And now that we are, you know, we're, we're in the spring and snow's gone, we can get a good feel for, for how things set up and how things relate to each other, 'cause sometimes it's hard to get your head around it just looking at plans, so. With that, again, I think that's a really good start to the sketch process, and hopefully you'll be able to build on that.
I plan on coming in with a better plan.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, members.
The next item, TGN Properties LLC requests a sketch plan review for a daycare facility at seventy-nine County Road, Assessor's Map, R fifteen, Lot seventy-eight.
You're next.
This one, Jay?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for a commercial development in our TBC two district for a daycare facility out at the corner of County and Saco Road. I think it's a couple of things that are worth noting on the property. One, it's in the aqua protection overlay district, which has some requirements in terms of stormwater design and other type of elements. Then the other provision that is particularly worthy of note is that this property is listed on our historic preservation list in the zoning ordinance, and so there's a set of criteria there for the planning board to work with the applicant on in terms of preserving the property to essentially the greatest extent possible, and I'm sure board members have looked at the sort of site plan rebit standards around, around that, so I think that's something we'll wanna spend a bit of time here at Sketch Plan talking about. And to that end, given that this property is on this, is on the list, staff did convene or pulled together the Historic Preservation Implementation Committee, and the applicant sat down together probably about a month or so ago to start to talk about the property and to review sort of the historic elements therein, and so I'm sure the applicant sort of prepared to talk a little bit about that meeting. And probably worth the discussion, just, you know, at this point, staff would anticipate that when a formal submission is brought forth, that we'd send it back to the historic folks for a review and their recommendations, unless they hear otherwise from the board, that would be our expectation. I think the other critical element to talk about on this project is traffic. Saco and County Roads, that intersection is, is pretty notable in town for not the right reasons. So, we just wanna be sure the applicant is aware of that fact, and be sure, as they mentioned, that they have a traffic engineer sort of queued up, and that they do a full analysis of the area and intersection, and, you know, just ensure that this development doesn't exacerbate existing issues, and where feasible, make improvements. Then we have a couple other elements that we flagged, just in terms of architecture. I think I should note that I had an opportunity to meet with the applicant, I think twice even, outside of the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, to really talk about sort of building location, trying to orient the building close to the corner as our design standards typically call for in the zoning seat, talk about access management, where they have furniture on both County and Saco Road, really limiting access to sort of the, the street with the lesser traffic, through traffic, anyway. So, a lot of those sorts of elements, you know, the applicant's been pretty responsive of, and we've had good conversations around, and to get to that, I'll turn back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Jay, and I'll turn over to the applicant.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Vinyl Appleby. I'm a licensed professional engineer working for the Sheridan Corporation, and we're pleased to be here this evening to present this sketch plan. Joining me tonight, the two folks here on my right is, the lady is Katie Norton, and she is the owner and applicant, and so she's the applicant, KGN Properties LLC. And Jim Anderson is also from Sheridan Corporation. They have got some information they'd like to share with the board at the end of my presentation, if that's possible, to address the historical preservation concerns that Jay has brought up, and also the building issues that Jay has brought up. I did wanna say, before I get started, I just appreciate Jay's time, as you mentioned, we've met twice already with him, he's been great guiding me through this process so far. Being third on the agenda, I've, I've learned. Pictures tell a thousand words. And start with a couple of aerial photographs, actually taken off Google. The property is a three-point-six-eight acre parcel located, as identified earlier, at the intersection of County Road, Route one thirty-nine, and Saco Street. And we're in the northeast quadrant. Currently on the property, which is outlined, the shape of which is outlined by this red line, I don't know if you can see that, fairly, fairly, almost a square parcel. We've got fields, we've got tree areas, and a previous residential structure, and three or four outbuildings on the property. Wanted to also show the, so this is diagonally across, looking back towards our property to the northeast, and if we were to stand or fly or whatever, position ourselves over the property and look back in the southwest direction, I thought this would be an important photograph, because I'm not sure who, how many times the board members have been at this intersection, but these, I wanted to highlight the other three corners, just as a frame of reference as to what we're proposing and what the neighborhood, I call it the neighborhood. I mean, I know that Scarborough's very diverse, you have lots of different types of neighborhoods in the town, and this is, this is our immediate neighborhood. So, we're in the TBC two district zone, and this property, besides that zone ordinance and requirements that we have, that we fall under, we are, also fall under a sand and gravel aquifer overlay district, which brings a certain, as you know, a certain amount of criteria with it. And I'd like to address some of those as, as I continue with the presentation. What we have here is a lot of photographs, which I've included these photographs in the sketch plan material that I submitted in the application. Basically, this shows it's a fairly open parcel with trees and outbuildings, as mentioned. Got a couple of photographs here as well of the previous residential structure. Probably might get into that, discuss those, we'll discuss that a little bit more. So, moving right along, we're looking at a site plan that may look like this. The name of the project's Laughing Out Loud Childcare Center. I wanna mention a little more about the property itself, there's, it's really a basically flat piece of property. There's only about a two to three feet topography difference between the front and rear. Because of that, there's basically no stormwater runoff in the existing condition. So, we were challenged with that, thinking ahead as to the stormwater runoff in the developed condition. We have no, besides being in the stormwater, I mean, in the sand and gravel aquifer overlay district, we have no natural features such as water bodies, or wetlands, or streams. It's, we've done some test pits in preparation of onsite septic, because also, as the other properties that we heard, this is, there's no public water and sewer available to this property, so we'll all be, those two, water and sewer, will be on site. So, we did some test pits in preparation for septic design, and we've got ten, we went down ten feet or so at ten different locations, and it's all same. So, that's good and it's bad, it's great for septic design, it's great for stormwater infiltration, but because basically everything, all the stormwater now runs directly down into the ground, again, we're challenged with that in the developed condition. So, as mentioned, we have engaged Diane LaRivito from Main Traffic Resources, who has done some preliminary work, and pending this meeting, she's prepared to finish up her traffic study. But what she's identified so far, she's done, they've gone out and done traffic counts in this area, and certainly they, I think they're very familiar with the issues that the town sees at that intersection. First and foremost, and readily, readily noticeable is, okay, where are we gonna have our access to the site? As you see, as we're proposing, we are coming off the side road, Saco Street, and... As you see, as we're proposing, we are coming off the side road, Saco Street, and just as far away from the intersection as we can. We can't do any better job than that right there. We will have a fair amount, a fair number of peak hour trips, which happen to coincide with peak hour in the roadways because we are looking at children being dropped off pretty much, you know, rush hour in the morning and being picked up in the late afternoon or early evening rush hours. So we've got a configuration in egress, one single lane in, and it's been identified that it would be very helpful to have a right out and a left out as well, just keep traffic movement absolutely as much as possible egressing from our property. We've got, property's 5,000 square foot, which is maximum allowed zone. We're looking at the building of 5,000 square feet. So it'd be a playground area, fenced in playground area for safety and security. We, looking at, these three areas here are bio-retention ponds that we're looking at doing some treatment. That's one of the requirements of being in the sand and gravel overlay district is that we have to address, as if it was a DEP stormwater project, we have to address the quality as well as quantity. So quality wise, we have broken up the proposed drainage areas into three smaller areas. Each one of those would be addressed by these bio-retention ponds. We've engaged a professional landscape architect who's looking at probably, the proper plantings that would go on bio-retention as well as completely, of course, around the site as The stormwater, we're not looking at one large retention pond, essentially because generally with a retention pond design, you have an outlet and the water goes somewhere eventually. Well, again, we, we can't, we don't have anything running offsite now, so we can't, we have to meet that condition in the proposed situation. So we are looking at underground chambers, basically the stormwater after it runs off the site through the bio-retention ponds will end up in underground chambers and then 100% will be infiltrated back into the ground as the, as the existing condition. We've identified an area, potential area for the onsite well and septic in this area. We're in the sand and gravel aquifer, you've heard me say that. We also have to do a nitrate study. Actually, we've had that done already and things are looking really, really good as far as meeting the criteria and the ordinances for nitrate levels at the property. We're far below that. I think, I'd like to address the staff's comments in reverse order, if that's possible. Starting with the second page. Can you move my glasses? So staff has mentioned, has noticed or recorded in item G that it appears that the disturbance is greater than an acre, which is in fact correct. So we will have to do a DEP stormwater permit, but only a permit by rule, because the actual amount of impervious as proposed is less than an acre. I think we're still going to be subject to the provisions of the town's post-construction stormwater infrastructure management ordinance, as Jay has mentioned. The parking ratio is F, moving towards the beginning of these comments. We were showing 32, so we were pretty close. I guess calculations by staff is 33. We'll make sure we have 33. The dumpster pad location differed from what I presented in your package between the site plan and the landscape plan. And, you know, this being sketch plan, we're in the, we're in the process of revising the site plan. I can tell you now that the dumpster location, our preferred location is shown, as shown on, I don't remember which plan, but it would be this plan here, closer to the roadway, which I know might be staff's less, less preferred location, but we will ensure that we will fence that dumpster in with a adequately high fence and lots of landscaping. Reason, I had it one time on one plan, and I think that's the one that was being referred to, we had it in another location, but it was adjacent to the playground area and, and we had some concerns about that, not only from smell, but the very remote chance that, you know, we have a dumpster fire or something like that. We really didn't want that next, it does happen, I mean, rarely, rarely. But we didn't want any kind of possibility like that right next to where the children would be outside playing. So we'll, we'll take care of it with adequate landscape and we'll probably end up in the location we show now unless we hear from the board with strong suggestions. So D is just locate, screening the propane, the propane tanks, which we will. C mentions that there's a possibility that we might be able to reduce the amount of impervious through a redesign of, I guess mostly probably the secondary exit. I didn't mention that. The main circulation would be traffic in here, parking here, and exit back in this direction. Okay, but now we anticipate that a number of children will be dropped off by a bus, a small bus. A bus can't turn around in this parking lot, so we're looking at the circulation for a bus, basically taking this loop and coming around here. There may be an opportunity for us to shorten this area here back in, back and bring it back into this exit, maybe take these parking spaces and extend it up here a little bit. And then in that case, this would only solely be a bus exit versus some additional parking. I was looking at that as employee parking, like that. So if any members have comments on that, I'd like to hear them. B, moving up to the top of page two, oh, it was identified that in this area, and in the future, there may be sidewalks in this area. There's adequate right of way on both County Road and Saco Street for the most part for sidewalk within the, within the town right of way. It gets, that's not the case right here in the corner. The property line is almost at the pavement in this corner. So what we're proposing to do to address this concern is that we will provide a diagonal, for lack of a better description there, diagonal easement. We'd like to propose that to the town, have it available to the town, at which point if and when the sidewalk is constructed, I think we'll be able to utilize that corner of the property, the sidewalk in front of it. So if I could just jump up to traffic concerns next on the first page and save the architectural one that's short for Katie and Jim. The traffic as identified, yeah, so this is, this intersection gets pretty bad, it depends on what time of day you're there, obviously. So we feel that Main Traffic Resources understands the issues going on at that intersection. I think they have a real good handle at the traffic that we're generating, and I believe they've made some early comments, and I included those, that they're not anticipating a significant difference. There will be some, some movements that will change in their level of service. I saw some early numbers that some, one or two movements actually got better. That's to be seen in the traffic study, which, which I know will be reviewed by peer, peer review, I'm sure. So we'll, we'll include a full traffic study as part of our formal submission. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to perhaps Jim first on the, on the architectural.
My name is Jim Anderson. I'm with Sheridan Corporation, and I've been working in conjunction with the owner and also we have, we've hired an architect on the design standards. And what we've tried to do is to incorporate, Scottboro is offered in a specific design standard, we'll look at the exterior first. And more specifically, because it is a corner lot, it requires more architectural detail on both Saco Street and along Route 22. So what we've tried to do is to incorporate those standards and what the owner feels is the desired look for the schoolhouse with a vinyl siding similar to a client board siding, steep pitched roof, adding an accent to the main entrance to the building with some brick veneers. And then also along, so this, this is the main entrance. This actually faces a parking lot. So really because of the building location and how it's situated on the lot, all four of the sides of the building will have a great deal of architectural detail. And this end here is the narrow end of the building. And this faces Route 22. And these doors are accessed out of the school classrooms. And again, it'll have a porch along this entire end wall with a sidewalk to allow access out of the classrooms in that emergency outside the parking lot. And then this elevation on the top of the page, this is the side of the building that will, will face Saco Street. And what we've done is incorporated a few false doors along the, along the roof line. And we're showing a couple of, but that's just, I think we're going to get away from that design to communicate with some other detail to help break up this long, this long roof line here as well. And I know we're just in the sketch plan phase, but we figured we could give you as much information as possible tonight. It helps us in the next meeting and also give you a better idea of what we're trying to, trying to accomplish here. So the look and feel of the building, we're trying again to incorporate what the town requires and also the owner's requirements, and also keep the, keep the construction costs on an affordable level. And we have a rough floor plan that we've developed so far. I don't know how much we've been into this tonight. This is all based upon the design criteria for, for daycares and the number of children in the school, and that's all based upon what the current state and federal code requires. So really, that's what I've got for the architectural details. Again, any input you have tonight would be great. See if we're headed on the right, the right path in regards to what you folks are expecting would be very appreciated. So I will have Katie discuss the historical issue on the outside.
Hi, everyone. I'm Katie Norton, owner of this property. And it was brought to our attention after we purchased the property that it was on the historical list. And so thanks to Jay, I got in touch with the Historic Preservation Implementation Committee, and we met and kind of discussed what it was about this property that they felt was historical or of archaeological significance. And we came to the determination that it was mostly the house. They were concerned about the house being of historical significance, given it's the old Thames residence, one of the last sawmills in the state, shingle sawmills in the state, which I believe was moved off the property at some time ago. And so the house was what they really were considering, they wanted us to preserve and to keep. And so after that discussion, I went out and I found, I talked about three different people that were maybe interested in moving the house because that's in the provision as something that could be done. One of them being Ryan from Down Back Salvage, the others being Warren and Michael Knight of Sound Hill Farm in Hillside, Limer, who I believe have actually moved houses for, Scarborough for, and have actually preserved them. And then I think they're talking about actually giving one of them back at this point, too. And then another is a general contractor who does salvage work, and his name is Chris Churchill. So in meeting with these people, we've come across a number of different things with the home. And we learned before I met with the historical committee that the original house actually burned down in the 1930s. This house is not the original home. It does have the original foundation, the house that's there is thought to be a recreation of the home, the 1700s home that was there. In speaking with these three groups of people, we came up with many different things about the home, mostly that there are some concerns about whether or not this is actually, can be considered a replication of the original home. Number one, when you go in the basement, there's the original 1700s foundation. The L portion of the home is actually a new granite foundation, so there is actually addition on the house. The other is, there is plain milled lumber beams in the attic, which can be bought currently at any hardwood store. It was thought that maybe the Thames family had rebuilt the house themselves. They own a circular sawmill. And so these are plain straight mill boards and not circular sawboards like you would find if they milled it themselves. Also, the Knights kind of pointed out the big, is that, big one is that there's definitely no chimneys in the home except for one that fed a wood stove. There's no fireplaces in the home, which there would have been one in every room in the 1700s home. Also, there is two inch hardwood oak in throughout the home on the floors. A 1700s replication would have wide beams of pine boards. And also molding in the home was done in bit piece and not as one big cast molding like would have been done in the 1700s. Given that, we still wanted to see what we could do to preserve the house as much as we could. So we do have a signed proposed contract with Chris Churchill that if the town planning board allows us, he takes things down piece by piece, makes a blueprint, and he is willing to rebuild the house if inadequate home is found for it. That, you know, looking at the provisions, moving the house off the property is one of the things that the Historical Society does consider adequate form of preservation. So, you know, given the fact of the questionable historical relevance of the home, we are still trying to find another home for it, if at all possible. Other things that we've looked at in the home, I like why the Knights did not want it on their property despite the fact that they actually have a relationship with the Thames family. It's a two by four construction, there's no insulation, there's no bathroom in the home, which is what makes it very intriguing to some people. But if this home were to be moved and repurposed and reused, a bathroom would be put in. So therefore taking away from that historical piece of that home. And then also, there is a lot of smoke damage to the inner walls of the home. We don't know if the furnace that fired at some point, or if it's from the wood stove. And there's also mold on the walls. So the walls themselves could not actually be taken off, insulation put in, and then the walls put back on. So to redo this home would be a great undertaking. And then to end up with a home that would not still be a replication of the original 1700s home seems to be like a little loss of labor there. So that's kind of what we've found at this point. I look forward to hearing comments about that. But like I said, and I do have copies of the signed proposals from the contractor, who said he is willing to try to find a home for it, but he would take it down in pieces in the process.
Be happy to take questions and love your input.
All right. Thank you. We'll start down at this end this time. Very good.
I have a few questions. I am actually the butter next to that.
I'm the steak. You look incredibly familiar.
You were next to that, this property?
I live right next to it, yeah.
Yeah. Get the horses.
We, we spoke when you first looked at it, and I thought that daycare would be a great idea. So I'm glad to see that you're able to do that, or proposing to do that, I should say. So I have a couple of questions. One is, can you flip back to the site plan that shows the?
Yeah.
Yeah, that. I like the overall layout. I like the playground area and the turnaround. The thing that I would mention is, I know that they were out there doing a stormwater topography map from the site, and it is very flat, as you know. But it does, just from... But it does, just from living next door and sitting on the porch, it does run from the front corner to the back corner.
Correct.
Just a, you know... So when, and I know you're going to be, when you, if you move forward with this, you're going to be grading and leveling and putting in parking lot and all that stuff. So I don't know if the positioning of those stormwater chambers in the back, how that plays into things, but I would say that once you get all the, you know, as you grade it and get everything laid out where you want it, I would try to put those where they're most effective. There's a little hill actually in that back corner, but there, it's kind of like one is right in the lowest spot and one is in the little bit higher spot.
I think this is about the lowest part, right?
It is.
From the total. We're going to have, we're going to have less running off in the developed condition than exists. Because we're going to, as you can see, we're, right now, we're proposing this all be, you know, in its natural state with, we're going to save as many trees as we can. So there'll just be, instead of this whole lot, what little does run off over here, like I said, that doesn't sink into the ground, it will just be this in the future. What this is going to be is underground storage to take care of the water coming out here.
Okay. That's what I thought. And she's an expert in stormwater, so when we get to her, she will... I'm not even, I don't have to. I know she's going next up. She will, she will take care of the stormwater. I learn something new from her every week.
Yeah, we don't have the luxury of installing storm drains even in the street, but we don't have the luxury of tying into those like most sites would because nothing goes there now.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I would just like to see when you, when you get it all done, just keep in mind that it's flat as when you, as you, even if you grade it a little bit, you change it because it's so flat. You know what I mean?
Okay.
And then the other thing was the septic systems. I kind of like where those are because it's a good spot for those.
We want them as far away from you as possible.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I asked Jay. I'm still part of the planning board. I have no, nothing to gain from or lose from this, so I'd like to give my comments. Where the septic systems are, though, you're going to have like, you potentially could have 100 kids there. I know you said you only get to put a license in for 75, but, you know, that's a great spot for daycare, so you might have some pretty high demand for your services. So I would just, obviously, you'll have the septic designed for that. I'm not concerned about that, but I would want to see it for the maximum number of people, which I'm sure you're going to do. And I guess the other thing is just, you know, you have to be cognizant of the fact that you're in an aquifer overlay area and you have to take all of that into consideration when you're, because my well's not far from your well, so... Other than that, I think, I looked at the architecture. I thought it looked really good. I thought it fits the area well because it's kind of a farming kind of, North Scarborough is more of a farming-type community, I'll say agricultural, and it, I like, your design looks really nice. I think it fits the area well. And I already know like a bunch of people are probably going to sign up for your daycare, so I think that's all I have. I'll have to make it when you come back.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks. Rich?
Yeah, a couple of things. When I first read the description of the building that was on there and the fact that there was no bathroom, it took me a bathroom minute, and then I realized that what was probably close to that facility was a one-hole or out and back, which would have been what would have been on the land of the 1700s and probably in the 1930s as well. I, this may be heresy, but I probably don't have as much of a concern about the preservation of that building because it doesn't sound as though it really did replicate the house from the 1700s. But I will say with the foundation of half of that house being from the 1700s, I don't know if you've given any thoughts to the possibility of using that rest stone, that old stone, as some sort of a feature on the property as a way of at least preserving that part of the heritage.
That's a great idea.
There may be some, you know, some really good possibilities there that you could use.
Oh, I thought I mentioned to you, we are very much...
Do you need to come up and back up to the podium?
We are very much willing to work with the Historical Society if they would like to put some kind of monument plaque or something like that on the land as well. But using the foundation is actually an amazing idea. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Yes. You're going to have to do something with it to fill it in or whatever, but those stones might tie the heritage of the land to your building.
I think the landscape architect would love to incorporate that in his plan.
Okay. Thank you. I think the architecture looks great. I like that there's interest on every side of the building. I looked at the inside. I guess the only question I had, I'm not familiar with the requirements on ADA bathrooms. And you have one in there. I don't know with 75 children if a second might be warranted someplace. I'm not, again, I'm not familiar with the requirements, but I was wondering about that possibility.
In each classroom, they'll have their own individual bathrooms. We have an ADA bathroom, and this is for public use and for the staff, but each classroom will have its own individual bathroom for the students or for the...
And ADA compliant?
Yeah. Whatever is required for the ADA compliance is what the architect will incorporate into the plans.
Okay. And thank you. And one other question on the location of the dumpster, I, it was shown on two different places.
Right.
Is it going to be where the school bus circles around? Are the school bus going to be going past that or that's on one, that was on one tap that we got?
This is our current plan. In this location, we originally had it up here, but then the concerns would be in the closeness of the playground were an issue. I mean, you know, you've got to do provisions for the truck to come and pick it up, and then I guess the solid waste truck would also leave in that area. But that seems to be about the only potential for another area here. If we continue it like this, it's further from the building, but...
But there will be some decent screening?
We can screen that, we can screen it very well.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I liked your concept.
Thanks, Rich. Roger?
Yeah, Katie, you did a great job conveying the historic communications with the National Historic Implementation Committee. And I guess my question is for staff, Jay, do we get a summary from the committee of that or were you in the loop on that?
So I was at the initial meeting and where, you know, there isn't a formal application to this point. The committee hasn't provided a formal recommendation, but as I sort of said at the outset, my inclination would be unless the board tells me otherwise, would be when we do receive a formal application like we do with other peer reviewers and we've dealt with Conservation Commission in the past and others, would be to send this directly to the Historic Committee and ask for their recommendation and input for the board's consideration.
And the reason I'm asking is because I tend to agree with my colleague to my right here that the findings don't find of real high value, but I completely love the idea of the foundation stone being, that's absolutely great. Other things I noticed, and I really commend you all, too, for identifying trees that you can maintain on site as much as possible. I have a question about a couple of them around the edges of pavement, whether or not they'll be able to save, be saved kind of a thing. But I guess my question is in how are you going to communicate that to your contractor? Because I know we all sit here in this room and say, we're going to save this one and this one and this one, but till you get out there with your grader and your contractor, it's another story.
Yeah. Well, a shared incorporation is the contractor.
Great. Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
We're not, so we've got that extra close bond with our site. We don't do the site work, but we sub that out, but...
It'll be like a GC.
Jim and I personally will be involved with that. Jim's project manager and I'd be the site engineer. We're also looking at, as we tweak this design, pushing the pavement a little more to the east, which will, actually, we lose a tree that we thought we could save, but it's one of those ones that was really close, which, but we definitely have a better situation with some trees in this area. So again, we'll do all of these trees over in this area and along the property line along back here. Those are all three maps.
Okay.
We feel like we're doing the best we can.
Great. And here they come, the stormwater questions. I know you said that you're going to get a PVR, but with an infiltration gallery type thing that you have there, does that lend itself to a PVR? I mean, just, you don't have to answer it now. I'm just wondering, or whether or not you need to have the biofilters lined or anything like that because you think you got your drinking water well, not too far from where your infiltration gallery is kind of a thing. So I'm thinking...
Yeah. We'll take a look at that. Honestly, I don't think we've turned over every stone with regard to that, so that's good, that's good input. You know, the first inch of rainfall will be treated through here. We're going to put in provisions in the catch spaces as well for oils.
I was just going to say, an oil-water separator would be perfect.
Yeah. The fact that we get 10 plus feet of gravel and everything's going, going straight down, but we'll look at that, too.
All right. And again, just a reminder, too, if the bioretention ponds need to be lined or not, I can't remember.
Yeah, we'll have a, we'll have a full design and a detail in our...
Yeah, with the aquifer protection overlay.
Right. I think we're proposing it to be lined.
Okay. And I think, I think that's all I have. You guys are well on your way and far further than the sketch plan, I think, the concept. So good luck. I can see the excitement.
Bye.
Thanks.
Roger?
I would agree with my colleagues. I think this is a great project for this area and it's well needed, I imagine. I wanted to talk to you, ask you about the, you mentioned a small bus. You anticipate using it, you know, a small bus. Do you still need that radius turn with a small bus?
Which, yeah, this, well, both of those, believe it or not. Well, we're looking at, if you're familiar with vehicles, I think it's the same as a single unit 40-foot. So it would be a, I guess it would be a small school bus, even though I think it's really going to be a van, a van-type bus. So, yeah, I've set another plan where I, you know, I showed the footprint of the wheels going through here, and that much is required, if that's what you're asking here.
Well, I was wondering if it's going to be a regular-sized school bus or just a van because if it's just a van, then you might be able to just reduce that circle, that radius to eliminate some of the pavement.
Right.
But if it's going to be a school bus, then...
I'll have that question.
Well, we're going to, Katie's going to have a, she'll be the landlord, it'll be another entity actually operating the daycare, and they, I'll get that question answered.
Okay.
Because they know more what, how the children are going to be dropped off other than by their parents, right? We'll make it as small as we can. We don't want to put pavement down, but we don't need to.
Sure. I think it's a good idea to take advantage of the stone foundation. I'm just kind of curious, do you have any sense, does the Historic Society consider the building historic? Any, if they do? Okay. What happens if nobody, Churchill can't find somebody to take it? What are you going to do then?
He'll own it at that point.
Okay. He's going to move it off your property, though. Okay.
So Roger, if I just could come back to that one minute? I know the planning board really hasn't dealt with the historic preservation component too much. I think the one project we dealt with was the South Gate House where Vest is doing some multifamily. They were preserving it and really, there wasn't a whole lot of question came up other than I think of the porch was part of the original. But be that as it may, with this one, where the applicant is really not proposing to repurpose the ancient building and has at least begun to articulate that it doesn't have usefulness for what she's looking to do, what the ordinance really talks about, and I can dig out the precise language, but really talks about ensuring that the applicant has given every due diligence to preserve the building either onsite or to relocate the site, but ultimately it's up for the planning board to decide, you know, what, where does it go? But I do think, you know, again, the Historic Implementation Committee, Preservation Committee will have, you know, their recommendations and thoughts in terms of the site, but I just, you know, want to put that out there in terms of, you know, Ms. Norton has sort of done what she, you know, thinks she can do with it. And I do think, you know, if we do look forward to moving forward to a relocation or removal and rebuild, you know, maybe some further documentation about what that looks like and how that occurs. And I don't know, I don't know what the answer is right now, but, you know, just something to...
And I'll briefly jump in to piggyback on that to say that I agree with Jay's recommendation mentioned earlier that we have the Historic Committee provide us with a more formal kind of assessment and memo along lines of what we get from Conservation Commission and so forth. And that, you know, it's also, just also want to make the point that having that committee designate something as significant and, you know, has implications for our process and the ordinance, but it's not the same thing as suggesting that it's on a national register or, you know, an official landmark or something like that. That's not at all to say that it's not significant, but that's, I think that's an important distinction to make because the council does it. So, so the, it may be designated by the council and that has real implications that we need to, we need to take into consideration, but there are different sort of levels of it. And so I think that would be one thing that would be helpful to get a little bit more of a formal...
Okay, sure.
Assessment of...
Okay. The only last question I have is I noticed on one of your plans, at the corner, that you have a tree and a plaque to remain. What is that? What's the plaque?
The plaque is actually to the Knights family from the Thames, because I believe the property was originally owned by the Knights and sold to the Thames way, way, way back. So they did have a relationship with the family. It's going to stay.
That's on our property, Katie's property, and we'll put an easement around it or we'll otherwise protect it. There is a tree that's implanted with a black phone rock. We'll protect that. That's on that corner.
I might have read it in there.
Yeah. So that's about where we're going to, we're offering an easement for the sidewalk construction. Actually, the sidewalk would run right in front of, right in front of that.
No, I think it's going to be a great addition to that neighborhood, so it wouldn't fall to something that would, I'm all about.
Thanks, Roger. Susan?
I don't have much to add. I think the, to the town's credit, that this much concern is being driven to the historical value of this property. And I trust that the Historical Society will come up with what they feel is the best plan. It's very complicated. I mean, I spent a bunch of time on the telephone with the Historical Society trying to figure out just what, how do you determine the value of this particular building? And I think that moving it may be the answer. Who knows? But I am reminded about what happened when we did the... Husband. New location, number one, that used to be, I don't know if it was called, Bayous Village, right? Now, that was a huge thing that happened in Scarborough, Bayous, Bayous Village. And what we ended up doing, because it was so far gone, was minimal, but it was very, it's very accessible, okay? We took the arch and put it in the town park with a thing that says, this is what this is all about. And it's entirely possible that somebody likes this, that actually goes out into the community and says, we're going to put this building someplace where we can talk about what it actually was is a lot better than leaving it where it is. I trust that the people who are actively involved in this can come up with something that we'll be happy with. The only other question I had was when you were showing the outside of the building, the elevations, okay? The one we didn't mention, this is the last one. Okay, one at the bottom. Where does that face?
This will face the playground.
Playground. Okay.
So these are the doors that access...
Is I coming down Saco Street? Is that what I'm going to see?
No. This is what you'll see on Saco Street.
Okay. And is I'm coming down 22?
22 County. Right. So this is, this is the end.
Okay. I'm just doing this because we're really big here on, you know, what you're seeing as you drive by. And when I first saw that last elevation, I thought, well, that's pretty boring. But if I was a kid playing in the playground, I probably wouldn't care. So I guess I'd take care of that problem. The traffic analysis, I'm looking forward to seeing more about traffic analysis, and I don't, not right now. And I would like us, I'm not sure where we ended up with the internal circulation design to be more... us, I'm not sure where we ended up with the internal circulation designed to be more compact, to reduce the amount of impervious surface. And if there is anything that can be done, I mean, this is just talking time right here.
I'll take a look at it.
That would be great. Other than that, I think we've covered a bit that concerns me. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Susan. And before I forget about it, I'll pick up on your last point. I think the homework to clarify what sort of vehicle might be used for drop-off and pickup relates to that, at least somewhat, to the extent to which the applicant might be able to reduce the amount of impervious surface there. So, that'll be something we'll look for for next time. Yeah, I won't belabor all the points, but as my fellow board members have indicated, I think you're definitely off to a good start. Showing a lot of sensitivity to the Aquifer Protection Overlay District, and I think it was a helpful overview of the site topography and your stormwater treatment approach. So, that's definitely off on the right track. Look forward to seeing a more formal traffic analysis, the results of the, sort of more detailed stormwater, stormwater planning and the nitrate flume analysis that you mentioned. I think it just come in and was looking promising, so we'll look for that next time. In terms of the architecture, I think it's definitely promising. I personally would welcome the removal of the hoopla. Sometimes there are mixed feelings about that, but I think you can certainly achieve compliance with the design standards and that look without having to pop that on there.
We've already thought about that. That's probably the way.
It sounds like you had me on that, so that's good. I think sometimes people think that the town requires that people put those on things, just so that they have the New England vernacular. But it sounds like you're taking a thoughtful approach to that, which is great. And along those lines, it would be helpful for next time, when you come in with a more fully developed plan set, to have at least one perspective rendering that would show the view of the, maybe that corner, corner of the building from the Saco Street intersection, and then make sure that the rendering or rendering that would include the dumpster enclosure, the proposed, in that proposed location, that that be clearly shown, so we have a sense of what that sightline is and what that screening would be. I appreciate your dilemma there and desire to keep that away from the playground, absolutely. Yeah, I think, oh, and I do want to thank you for your comment on the potential for a diagonal, as you described, a diagonal easement across the corner for future sidewalk placement. And again, that's having to sort of think ahead, because we're not quite there yet in terms of having an actual sidewalk network, but that's something that some of us feel pretty strongly about, so I appreciate your willingness to consider that. Beyond that, I, oh, and I'll just reiterate, I talked about it briefly before, but on the Historic Preservation front, I think, well, first, I do appreciate all the effort and thought that's probably been given to how to approach that and how to preserve something one way or another, and there are multiple options there, it sounds like. And I just want to reiterate that we'd like to see, you know, a more formal kind of memo from the committee. I know the chair happens to be sitting here tonight. So, thank you for that, and then we can kind of factor that in.
Yeah, we'll definitely meet once a place more and get their feedback. I have one quick question.
Sure.
On the, I haven't presented before, Scalboro before, so I'm not sure of this answer. On, would it be best for our traffic engineer to attend the next meeting? Will you have questions? Do you think, I mean, what's the normal first stage you usually do? Does the traffic engineer attend? And, you know, will you have those, that kind of direct question? Do you think?
Certainly, you can speak to it.
Or should we wait to see what the peer review is?
I think if we see this study, I think, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I think largely it depends on the complexity and the, yeah, the nature of the, of the analysis and what our peer reviewer and staff review.
I didn't know that was a loaded question.
We'll continue, we'll continue to discuss.
You are, okay, right. I'll get feedback from you later.
Yeah, I was just going to say, staff does a good job of sort of vetting that stuff and determining whether that's something that's helpful, so. Anything else from us at this point?
No, great, thank you. We'll see you later.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is a consent item. Merle Hartford Painting LLC requests final subdivision approval for 93 Running Hill Road, Assessor's Map R-35, Lot 18. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just noted, this is a consent item. That means it's been before this board on a couple of occasions. Last time we reviewed it, the principal remaining question really had to do with the amount of disturbance that was going to happen overall. And once we sort of uncovered that answer, and it was going to be under an acre, the applicant's gone through, revised their plans, had all the requisite notations that staff and board members had asked for. And as I said, I think at the last meeting, the board was comfortable with the direction things were heading, moved this to consent. And typically, when that's done, so long as all the items haven't satisfied, the board usually discusses the matter pretty quickly. So, with that.
Thank you, Jay. Does the applicant have anything to add if they're here? You don't need to make a presentation, just putting that out there?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, great. Anyone have any comments or concerns?
I would just say, this is a perfect example of some work. Very much according to the world.
Definitely. So, in light of that, I will move that we, the board, grant final subdivision approval for 93 Running Hill Road, Assessor's Map R-35, Lot 18. Actually, we do have a motion, don't we?
Yes, we do have a motion for you.
So I get to do some real reading. I move to approve the application of Merle Hartford Painting LLC, plans prepared by BH2M Engineers for the final subdivision plan of land at 93 Running Hill Road, with the following findings and conditions. Findings, the applicant proposes a three-lot residential subdivision with access off of Running Hill Road, a new road. The residential subdivision is located within the Running Hill Transition District and the Aquifer Protection Overlay District, and has been designed accordingly. Based on review of the materials submitted, I find that the subdivision meets Section Four and Six of the subdivision plans, ensuring that the development meets minimum standards for the protection of public health, safety, and welfare with the following conditions. Number one, prior to the release of the attested final subdivision plan to the applicant for recording at the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds, the applicant shall pay the required traffic impact fee of $2,071.94. Number two, prior to the issuance of a building permit for Lot Two or Lot Three, a detailed site grading plan shall be submitted for the applicable lot. Grading plans to be reviewed and approved by the town engineer. And number three, prior to the start of work within the public right-of-way, the applicant is to secure a road opening permit from the Public Works Department.
I'll second that.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Action items, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and our final action item of the night. JBR Trust Two requests a site plan and subdivision plan review for a mixed-use development at 25 Plaza Drive, Assessor's Map R-58, Lot 32N.
Mr. Chair and staff, I need to recuse myself, as staff under my direct supervision will be working for this applicant, so I'm going to excuse myself.
Thank you for letting us know. So, makes Rick a voting member, if we get to that point on this item?
Yes, you are.
Jay, would you like to...
Sure. I know board members have seen this one before, so I'll keep my introduction brief, but this is a proposal for a multi-use, or multi-building, site plan in the TBC District, in the Oak Hill Plaza, particularly 25 Plaza Drive. Applicant seeking to improve the property with a, see, there's an existing building, they're looking to add a bank, and then also a three-story mixed-use building, which would be office, retail on the first floor and residential on the second floor. As I said, we've reviewed this item a few times before, and we've really worked through a lot of the details. I think in terms of staff review comments, you will have received review comments from the staff, as well as Bill Bray doing a traffic peer review, and Waterman Kern looking at engineering issues. In terms of staff comments, the principal sort of remaining issue, as we identified, really has to do with the impact at the Plaza Drive and Route One intersection, particularly with the increased traffic, particularly with the bank, it has a high traffic turnover. And so, to date, the intersection, as I said, at Plaza Drive and Route One, is currently not meeting standards, and so we need to be sure that the applicant at least isn't making any further exacerbating those issues. And I think Bill Bray sort of touched on a couple of different ways the applicant might want to consider addressing those, and I think they're prepared to talk with the board about that further, based on my earlier discussions. So I think that's really the principal issue. I do want to note that at the last meeting, at least one board member, if not others echoed, I believe, had really wanted to be sure that the internal vehicular circulation was appropriately designed. When Bill Bray sort of, when Bill Bray looked at this, he really, his comments centered around, you know, if the, if the fix, if you will, or the mitigation at the Plaza Drive, Route One intersection was to be the development of the easement area that's being proposed to the abutting property, then we might want to take a look at some other alignments. But if that's really, you know, if that easement area isn't going to be that mitigating factor, traffic's going to be directed elsewhere, then the internal circulation, you know, didn't have, didn't see any major concerns with. So, we did ask him to speak to that, and I did have a phone conversation with him on that. You know, again, you know, we have a couple of other staff comments, but I think at this point, I'll sort of leave it at that level, and here to answer further questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. And I'll hand over to the applicant.
So, thank you very much. I'll try to be really quick, you guys have had a long night. So just to kind of orient everyone for the rendering, I do have a, sorry, speed breakthrough from JBR Trust, and I think he'll be able to answer any questions you might have on the easement and traffic, and I'll try to answer a few myself. So just to orient you, this will be Plaza Drive. We're leaving the birdseye up so you can see it more in context. The bank with its drive-through, the renovated courtyard building with the new facade, and the proposed multi-use building. On-street parking is shown. We're showing the improved sidewalks and circulation, and then... Oh, I'm going to wind. And then just to orient you, to orient you, Route One. You only have two hands.
It's getting late.
Yeah. It's on agenda.
I'm going to...
Yeah, I'm going to chip that in.
That. Blame the town.
Right. So, just to orient you, Route One here, this is the Plaza Drive entrance that we're talking about. The new improved sidewalk along Plaza Drive, on-street parking, as we've talked about from our site walk last year. The three multi-use, the three-story multi-use building here, bank in the drive-through, the easement area for future connectivity that we had talked about previously, and then the courtyard building. So, it's possible I just think that we wanted to question, we've talked about it a lot, I think, over the last year, I think we had a couple of pretty decent ideas with the project.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Roger, would you like to pick it up?
Right now, I'm going to talk about the connectivity with the other...
I'm sorry, go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The connectivity.
Connectivity.
When we were, we did a site walk, we were talking about, let me get my bearings here. Is it Oak Hill Drive?
Plaza Drive?
Plaza Drive?
No, Oak Hill.
Plaza Drive is along here with Saco Town. Oak Hill Terrace comes up from the post-office area and intersects.
Right. And we, we need a mic, sorry. And we discussed, I don't recall any discussion, and maybe there was a meeting I missed, okay? But I don't recall any discussion about having a right-of-way at the extension of Adams.
So, the right-of-way, yeah, the right-of-way, it's not a right-of-way that we're proposing. You mean Adams here?
Yes.
Yeah, we're not proposing any thoroughway here. There's a connectivity easement for future connectivity.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Right. So what, we had talked about, if you remember at the site walk, we looked at it, there's over a five-foot grade change from this point to this point. It's a connection that can't be made. So, you would essentially have a ramp that would still succeed, but you couldn't make the connection.
It's also a what?
It's also a what through there. So we talked, it's a whatlet through there. So we had talked about it on the site walk, and then at the very next meeting, which would have been January, that we came back, that's when we started showing connectivity there, because we've been working with staff to try and find the bus connection point, and from the back property line, this represents the bus opportunity for future connectivity.
And that would go right into where Pat's, Paco's...
Right. It actually goes in, right now, it goes into three propane tanks at the back of Foley's property, but in terms of alignment and the bus opportunity to connect on this property is right here.
I think the idea is that that's not a connection that's going to be made with this development, but really what it's setting up for is when redevelopment happens on the abutting property, that interconnection could possibly be made. So, it's really down the road.
No, I understand that. I'm just wondering how much of improvement that that connection is going to make. This is, and I understand there's more of a problem going, going through the Oak Hill Drive extending that, you know, but, you know, maybe that was a meeting maybe I didn't attend, but you had the discussion about, was it consensus? Was that, that's where it was going to be? Okay, all right, then I won't belabor that. The other thing is, oh, I actually, I go by the place all the time, but before tonight's meeting, I purposely drove through there again, and I drove out right where Walgreens is, to go up that way there. And I just wanted to mention to you the sign there. There's a sign that says, "Right Turn Lane Only," right after Walgreens on the Route One.
Okay.
All right. And hidden behind it is no left turn, so that could be a problem with cars going out and trying to make the left turn, because you can't clearly see no left turn sign. It's just like a housekeeping thing, okay? I don't know, I think, seems to me, reading over this, that route, that entrance to Route One there is still going to be a problematic situation. I don't know how to resolve it. I'm not sure that I agree that Adams, the extension of Adams, ultimately would be, would solve that problem. Otherwise, I like everything about the project. I think it looks good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
I'm falling apart here, so I'm happy to go next. A couple of things that basically is coming along very nicely. I'm looking forward to seeing this done. By the way, YB put a new sign on Route One. I mean, I'm glad I lived long enough to see that happen.
Yes, sir, go for it. And it's going to be as nice...
It's going to be as nice as the one that's upside... Yeah.
Yeah, Walmart.
It's a Monday Walmart. I know it's not Walmart. That's very exciting to me. I think the biggest problem still is what to do with Route One. I just don't know how much it's going to be resolved by anything that we can do design-wise with what's happening here. I trust... I trust the people who understand traffic, they have it a lot better than I do, you know, because I live on Blackberry Road. So, I come down... I come down Route One, I go south on Route One.
All.
And the entrance for Route One onto Plaza Drive right now is a cake if it's not rush hour. When it's rush hour, it already backs up to here at the drive. And I don't think that this is going to create that much more of a demand, that it's going to be, you know, gridlocked. I don't think that's going to happen. But I do think that something has to be looked at in terms of... There were so many different suggestions on how to deal with that in terms of material. And I don't have the knowledge to understand it engineering-wise. It's the best way to go. But I do think that prohibiting all left-hand movements to and from Plaza Drive, the construction of a raised delta island in the... I like the word throat of the Plaza Drive approach in the intersection is something to be really considered. I mean, that alone will help, just no left turn, probably no left turn in. But it's going to be done in such a way that people can't cheat. I mean, feel free.
Well, again, it's one of those... You know, I'm not a traffic engineer. I don't pretend to be one.
I don't need to.
I'm a practical person. I've been on this property for over 30 years.
I know.
There's times a day when you can make a left turn out there without even stopping, because I've seen people do it.
Exactly.
And I don't recommend it. What we've talked about and gone back and forth with, because I think one side, you get engineers that'll overkill the design, and then there's other ways, I think they're simpler, like, you know, at least try things first before you, you know, over-engineer it. And we're willing to talk about, you know, no-left turns out of Plaza Drive. It's a big concession, I believe, because, again, I don't feel the problem exists 24 hours a day. There's limited times a day where it's a problem. You know, I've read a lot of traffic engineering reports, and getting two traffic engineers to agree on stuff, a lot of times doesn't happen. So that is something we're willing to consider, because from a practical standpoint, I think it does solve a big common problem, I mean, especially for people who want to make a right turn going south. So, you know, I think we can accomplish that with signage. I've discussed it with Jay about trying that approach with some hammer over our head to say, "If this isn't working, come back," you know.
I like that.
There's plenty of ways to deal with that without... You know, because I think by making no-left turns in the property, I think you're going to create a lot more problems than other places.
Well, you see, that's what I like about what you just said, is try the simple answer. If it doesn't work, have it very clearly stated that we have to look at it again.
Yes.
Because we don't know.
We're very comfortable with that.
And I'm comfortable with that as long as it's written down somewhere. But hanging around long enough to know it needs to be written down somewhere. I still don't like the circulation from the bank. I'm not going to like the circulation from the bank. I don't see any solutions for the circulation from the bank. My bank at Seaport, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you come into Seaport and you've got to immediately go building and go right, and you go right through the parking lot, and then you take a left, and then you go... I mean, it's like, seriously. It's a little bag. It's a little... It's a little hassle. It's not a problem. But this is... This is bigger. This is... I don't like it. If I was by the end of this bag off from Plaza Drive, as I look at... As I look in line, right? Right-hand side. So, I come in and I go to the window.
So, are you coming in the one way in?
That way. I want to go to the window.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'm not going to park. I'm... Or I'm not going to park. I want to go to the window. Now, in order to get out, I have to go through the parking lot. Right?
Yeah.
Let's go through the parking lot. And that's a pretty concise parking lot, you know? I mean, how many... How many?
About 10 sp... Maybe 12 spaces?
Yeah, 12 spaces. The alternative is to go all the way behind the buildings and go through another parking lot to come out further down Plaza Drive. I mean, this is... You know, I don't know. Maybe what I'm asking for is some kind of... I don't know what I'm asking for. I guess I just have to say I don't... I don't feel comfortable with it. I don't see any solution to it. I don't see anything else that can be done. Okay. Moving right along. By the way, thank you for the changes that you're making to... I appreciate your reviews, and I was asked when they worked with people out, and I'd really like the changes that you're making to the existing building.
Thank you.
This is going to be very... Very much appreciated. Update. What was the other one? I guess that my main thing is traffic. Banks are... Oh, and I said signage and... Oh, phasing. There was something about... The stuff here is not... Not really real consensus as to how to do phasing.
Okay. I just... Staff looked at the phasing plan and the sidewalk and on-street parking that's directly in front of the three-story building, the mixed-use building, that's identified to be part of Phase Three or... And again, the C, right. I'm sorry. I shouldn't use the lettering. The numbers don't necessarily equate to C when they... But if a staff looked at it, it seemed to make sense to have that on-street parking and that sidewalk as part of that building and that city.
Yeah. We're in agreement with that.
Are you?
Yeah.
Originally, when I did it, I assumed the bank would go first, but I didn't want to prioritize it. So, I thought the bank would go and then all the improvements would go and...
No, but we would... With tile, that... This stuff, if it gets built, the sidewalk and the on-street parking will go at the same time.
Okay. And then, because I'm... When I'm not a landscape person, I'm a sign person. The signage is going to be... So, you've got going at, like, on the building. Are you going to have any freestanding signs?
Yeah, there's freestanding signs in the application packet, I believe. And I believe they're on the drawings as well. Actually, I'm not going to orient myself.
That's why I'm talking now, because my brain's definitely...
So, in Tab Four are all the freestanding signs.
I said, Susan, you're referring to the actual property as well.
Yeah, property.
Oh.
These I...
Yeah. Not the white, we find the sign.
Right.
We've been trying to limit those as much as possible, and we've been very selective, like, with the newer building, we put a 10-luxed drive. We've tried to, you know, have building identification numbers, obviously, for, you know, people who find the buildings. And then, we've pushed back a lot of the tenants and trying to reduce signs. I mean, I think if you drive by that building, you can see the type of sign. And I think we just have to come back, you know, for modification or something if we...
Is there a way that we can get involved in that at the planning board level, not the planning board, but the planning department level, in that if there's going to be... What you're doing right now, the concept of how you're doing it, I think is really great.
Thanks.
But if something comes up where you have a tenant who insists on doing something different, can I get approval from staff or...
Yeah, that's not a sign. Yeah.
Are you talking about for freestanding signs? Is that what you mean?
Yeah. Freestanding is, you know, we've fixed one side of the building. What they've been doing now is not really a problem, but we're adding a bank, and banks are really big, on wanting good signage, and we don't know what's going to go in the other location.
I think a monumental sign would come back anyway for...
So, we'd have to get a sign permit at the minimum? And typically, then, the code officer, when they get a sign permit application, brings it to the planning staff's attention, and we say, "Yes, this was approved," or "No, this hasn't been approved."
Let's take our board. I'd be very happy to. This is how I feel. I mean, I've sat in the signs and I'm adding the signs, but I am going to be picky, because I'll go back to my path for landscapes. Landscape is fine. No problem. It's got that... What's that? That is a ZF.
Zalkova?
What is that?
A zalkova is, uh... It's like an elm.
Like an elm. But don't get too terribly called elm too, so...
Yeah, zalkova's quite... Quite large.
Okay. And then, up in the far left-hand corner of this landscaping plant...
Yep.
There's a thing that is called a TC. Are you sure it's not going to be a TO? I don't see the TC anywhere.
Oh, you caught a mislabel. Those are lindens.
Yeah. I just wanted to know that I actually do look at these, you know?
Yep. You caught a mess.
Okay. I'm fine. I'm very happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel?
Susan strikes fear to the hearts of folks with their editing prowess there. I have some of the similar concerns that have been raised in terms of traffic and in terms of the circulation. I'm not sure we're ever going to solve the traffic problems with connection to Route One. In the winter, yeah, you can turn left without a problem. In the summer, you can wait for a long time to even turn right. But I think trying something and seeing how it works, and then if it doesn't, kind of going back to the drawing board is a good way to go. I do want to commend you for what I see as a fully-integrated parcel there as part of a community with the bank and the changes to the existing building and that new building there. Seeing it as you've got it portrayed there and on the sketch plans, I think... I like it. I think you've done a good job, but still a little worried about the circulation in back of the bank. And I don't have any suggestions for what you can do about it, so... Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
I think it's... You did a good job. It's a lot of work. I was trying to figure out how you loaded and unloaded material, like, into the retail space, and I think I found a little picture of the truck that shows that you can park a truck out back and still drive by.
Right. There's all the little individual entries in back.
Right. Yeah. I kind of anticipate people are going to drive back there and out this way. That's just, I think, what I would do. So, maybe, I think everybody will do that. But it's going to be somewhat limited. There's not going to be people coming in and out of those doors other than the normal...
No. I mean, the tenant mix is there, and historically, they've been there. There's been almost no retail. It's all pretty much professional service offices. So, there's not much loading in...
Right.
Other than people kicking their trash.
Yeah, I think you... I think you did the very best you could with the space that you have. So, and I think Susan's pretty much covered the over grain, so... I don't know. I don't have anything negative. Maybe it's good.
All right. So, I don't have a ton to add. I think clearly the big headliner takeaway from this is that sort of the... I think what is now an understanding about the kind of iterative approach to the traffic movements with the no-left turn out and sort of see how things go. There are certainly some other issues and details to work through, some of which have been raised and some of which are in staff comments. I'm glad we got phasing clarification. I also commend you for the work you've done to kind of pull all this together, and I think it's certainly going to be an improvement to the existing building and to that area in general. And I'm... As much as, you know, the additional activity raises concerns about traffic and traffic movement, I think at the end of the day, it's certainly a good thing that this area's going to be more activated internally and that you're sort of filling that in. I know it's been a long process, so I look forward to seeing that come together. So, you know, with the understanding, again, that there are some of these details and open questions to work through, I think, and I think it's a sense of the board that we're satisfied enough with the general direction of the project that we're, I think, ready to consider preliminary subdivision approval. I don't see anyone disagreeing. So, with that, I do not have a motion, but I will simply move that the board grant preliminary subdivision approval to JDR Trust Two for mixed-use development at 25 Plaza Drive, Assessor's Map R-58, Lot 32M. And second, is there a further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a staff report, Jay.
Yep. I have two things to report on. One has to do with the comprehensive plan update, just... And I think I might have mentioned this before, but if I haven't, on May 23rd, we will have our first official public kickoff meeting. That time and exact location, still to be determined, but we will be making many more public announcements about that, but want to be sure you all are thinking about that and hopefully putting that on your calendars, because that will be, we think, both an important and exciting meeting, so...
What time's that meeting, Jay?
I'm not sure of the time yet. It'll probably be 6:00 or 6:30, something in that realm. It'll be in the evening. And then, the other item I want to update folks on is the Long Range Planning Committee is working on the Higgins Beach Code Audit. That's one of these provisions. When that zoning was put in place, maybe a little while ago, there was this idea about doing an audit, see how it's working. It's really a form-based code, which is different than a number of our other codes. And so, just let you folks know that we are conducting the audit, working with our consultants, and we'll be holding a sort of what we're calling a public open house on June 11th down at the Higgins Beach Association Clubhouse. And that will be sort of in the 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM timeframe. And it's an open house where people can come and go and sort of talk about how things are working or not, so...
What day of the week is that, Jay?
That's actually on Sunday.
Yep.
So, and again, we'll provide more information as that sort of solidifies and gets closer, but wanted to keep you updated on those.
And presumably, it'll be a little warmer that day than it was.
No problem.
With this one, the planning committee took our field trip out there in the cold state in March. But in all seriousness, it was very interesting to see, kind of in real time, how owners are... Owners and architects are utilizing the code and some of the maybe misfires in some ways, at least in terms of how the... Some of the designs and the construction are maybe not quite matching up with what was envisioned. But that's all part of the process, and so, I think it'll be something else to look forward to. And I think overall, it's been a really good process and achieved its goals. Do you have an administrative amendment report?
Yes, do have one thing to report. Down at the Garage Barbecue, this is 3 East Grand Avenue, they were going to put... They had... The building had an existing roof sign that needed to get removed, because once you have a non-conforming sign, you come through site plan, you need to address it. They were going to put a parapet so they could keep that sign. When they actually went to build the parapet, or, you know, the builders got in there, said, "Well, wait, we're going to have drainage issues here." So, they have now eliminated the parapet and are just putting the sign, a wall-based sign. So, it really didn't change the building in a meaningful way.